Good evening. And I'm going to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I am Mayor Mary Ann Edwards, and we're glad to have you all here. And for anyone watching online or on TV, welcome. So first, we're going to have our invocation, and that will be City Manager Erin Adams. And I'm going to do the flag salute after that. So if you remain standing and do the flag salute, so would you please stand?
Would you please bow your head? Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for privilege of calling Temecula home. We thank you for the business community that we have and the residents that we have. And, Lord, we just, we lift them all up, those that are hurting. We ask for you just to comfort them during these difficult times, this last couple of years. Lord, we acknowledge them. We acknowledge our first responders, and we ask that you continue to protect them, keep them out of harm's way. We pray for our schools. We pray for our hospital and our frontline medical professionals, Lord. And, Lord, we just ask for wisdom and discernment for this city council in conducting the business this evening. I lift up all the city staff and the good work that they're continuing to do and just protect them. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Erin. So right hand over your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards? I'm here. We have some special presentations this evening. So first, we're going to welcome the General Manager, Robert Grantham, from Retro California Water District. And I have to ask you, since I'm a Downton Abbey fanatic, you know, your name is Grantham. So, you know, is there any connection with any fictional characters or?
Well, when I was a child, I did live in England. I was there for three years, and others, of those two of them, Grantham, England has voted the most boring town in all of England. So I have that going for me.
Well, they made it look interesting anyway. So, welcome. We're glad to have you here. So what do you have for us?
Well, I, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much. And then thank you to Erin and his team for allowing us to come today. If I may, may I step aside very quickly and introduce our President of the Board, President Gonzalez Brady?
Hi, how are you?
Fine. Mayor Edwards, councilmembers, thank you so much for inviting us here today. I'm excited to have our General Manager, relatively new General Manager, Robert Grantham, with me, and also our Assistant General Manager Eva Pledger, and our Engineering Manager, Jake Wiley. And this evening, I think the main thing that we'd like to do is just really thank you, the council, the staff, the employees, and everyone that participated in a partnership with us on a very big project that was pretty complex and had the potential for really kind of going south, but it didn't. It came in under budget.
Good.
Ahead of schedule, and it was really in large part thanks to the teamwork and the partnership that we have with the city. So I'll let Rob kick this off, but we really do appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
And I'll be brief and turn it over to Jake. We both serve this community, and it's something that the council values. And Erin's been 30-something years in serving the community. And it's really that collaboration, you know, and thank you to staff. I know council understands just how great of a team you have, but being the new guy, and I can still say that, what I hear about is that collaboration and how we are able to move forward quickly as developments come up and how we're able to solve problems together. And that's pretty special. And it's special to come and speak to you and mention that, and also to the community at large. And so the collaboration, serving the community, and in particular, I want to say thank you for the Temecula Parkway project. I'm going to turn it over to Jake, who's our lead engineer on the project, and to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Robert.
Yes, thank you. And this is probably the last time you're going to hear about that, so probably everybody's pretty happy about that. You guys know what we did out there, 8,000 feet of 20-inch diameter pipeline along Temecula Parkway, which gets, what, 50,000, 60,000 trips a day? Yeah, really had the potential to snarl things. And really want to credit the city, big thanks for really just the willingness to think outside the box. And everybody from the City Manager, Greg Butler, Pat Thomas, Ron Moreno, Trish Ortega, your permitting.
You're doing really well on the name. That's really good.
Well, it's how appreciative I am. I mean, that's, and you all, too. I know you guys sat through our pitch on, hey, we think this is going to work, and it's going to be a win. But honestly, going into construction, it's like, you know, you still have those doubts. And it was, it really was a credit to, to your staff. It's, I felt it was really extraordinary effort, not what we see typically. You know, we, our borders stretch across multiple agencies and boundaries, and it's just a pleasure to work with these guys because they really do think outside the box. They're brilliant. So that kind of covers those bullets. You can read those.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yes, yes. And thank you to you guys, too, for really your support, for your support of our plan. And really, the results speak for themselves. We, you know, from the original concept of the project, we cut about 30% of the cost out, $2.5 million. That's real. I mean, we know what the costs were initially. We know what the costs are now. It's finished, everything, change orders, inspections, everything. And two point, over $2.5 million saved, so that's huge. If you put that into water context, we can buy about 2,500 acre-feet of water for $2.5 million. That's 5,000 homes served for a year for that, with just the savings alone. So, I mean, that's, it's huge. It's huge savings. The biggest thing, too, and I know this was a huge concern to the cities, was how long are we going to be out in the street? And we finished on time, 80 days ahead of the original schedule. So, and that's in-street construction. So, again, to these guys for supporting us in a phased plan and alternate routes and all these different things, just really, really, really appreciative. They made me look good, and that's not, not the easiest thing to do. A big part of it, too, was the public outreach. And the city is brilliant at their public outreach. Rancho, we're, we're getting there, right? But we take a lot from your lead, and, and that was a big help, too. And I think really it went a long way. We didn't get a lot of complaints, a few when we first started. That left out of Pachanga was a little rough the first couple of days. But, but really, you know, we, big effort in keeping people informed, you know, between the mailers and the community meetings, and really the city support in putting those things out, right? I would see it, soon as we put it out, the city, here it is, Rancho Water, new update. And you guys have a slightly larger following than Rancho Water, so that, I think it really helped just get the word out. So, again, excited to keep working with the city. I think, really, this project, huge for relationship building. We've been able to do not, not as big things. We, thank goodness, we don't have another pipeline project like that. But, but I think it just makes it easier. We've, you know, being able to contribute to these projects and work together and not waste resources, and it's a, it's a beautiful thing. So, thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thank you.
And this is my opportunity, if I may, to thank Jake and Eva as well for their leadership internally. They did a wonderful job. Eva actually had the plans in front of me before I even started, saying, you need to know about this. And so I appreciate it.
So you knew what was coming?
I, sort of.
Yeah.
I'm going to be very brief, and another quick thing, if I may, is what's coming next? And I will be brief. And I think we've all been listening to the news, conservation, call for conservation, drought in outside of our area, but it's probably coming. And so across the state, 50 counties, we have an emergency declaration. The important thing is if you look at the idea of communications, our community's done a fantastic job, and we need to recognize that. And so if you look at people's reactions, I've already done my job. What do you want, what more do you want me to do? And so our messaging is really about positive messaging. Let's continue to do a good thing, you know, save today to protect tomorrow. And so talk a little bit about just our, our program and where you'll see our signs, et cetera. And Erin invited us to come to Emergency Prepare This Day, and we had a booth there. Drought conditions, 50 counties, there's voluntary requests across the state for conservation that's most likely going to become mandated fairly soon. Lake Oroville is shut down, no power. Even Metropolitan, which imports water into Southern California, they've increased the stage, and so it's, it's here. So that outreach messaging, demand reductions, you know, we're, it's going to come. Conservation, acknowledging what the community's already done on our behalf, recognizing that positive messaging, and keeping it positive, so ensuring that we're doing this as a community, and inspiring individual actions. And so that's really what our message is, you know, check for, check your water budget, check for leaks, check sprinklers, small incremental change that we can all do that gets us in a better position, preparing for tomorrow. And then part of our, and this is our PIO, our drought reach, outreach, but being able to say thanks, going to the ballpark and having signs up there, saying, the ballpark is here today because you all, we all, did our job at home. And so thank you for that. And we'll even have videos and the start of movies coming up over the holiday season, which is kind of fun. I haven't seen that before. So with that, I just say thank you again for the time, and thank you to the team and to the council for serving the community.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Are we going to see the same type of water rates and the tiers and all that kind of thing coming back?
Yeah, so we adopted a three-year rate plan, tried to make a moderate inflationary type increases, particularly in this area. And so we, that does take into account the drought conditions and any reductions in water demands. And so the, the other thing is we're also, we've made investments in having reliable supplies, and that's an important message as well. Thank you for, councilmember, for all, all your investments over time, and so that we can stable, we are stable, and we'll continue to come back. And I commit to coming back to the council and giving you updates as this progresses. But we're in a good financial position, we're in a good infrastructure position to, not to cliche, to weather this storm, so to speak.
Yeah. So, and I know last time you had really great programs where you would go to people's homes and help them establish assessments on their sprinklers and how to be more efficient and things. Are you going to be able to do that again?
That's regardless of drought, that's an ongoing program and one that we're very proud of. In fact, even working with agricultural community, we, $4 million available to, and there's a plug, to change out for, for more efficient, water-efficient plants, three quarters of that, $3 million, so that came from the federal government. And so we've been very successful in bringing outside dollars to minimize the impact to customers. In fact, Jake and the team were able to secure $50 million towards a $70 million dam replacement cost. I mean, that's money that now stays in, in our constituents' pocket. So it's a really wonderful thing.
Well, I know that statistics told us that the last go-around Riverside County was fabulous in, well, in Southern California in particular, was fabulous in their preservation of, of water. And so I know we did at our house, and everybody sacrificed their lawns, including the Edwards family. And so, in fact, we're just now kind of getting it back, so I'll be planning to cut back on the sprinklers again. It is really important, and that's going to be, it's an ongoing issue for Southern California.
It is.
So hopefully it's not, you know, becoming worse. I think weather's changing a little bit, so we'll just see where it takes us. But in the meantime, we will be watching, you know, our water consumption. So thank you, Retro California Water District. And Robert, you have been wonderful partners for all the years, and even, you know, before we were a city, I know you work closely. So thank you very much for your cooperation.
I got a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, Stu.
So are they going to do the turf removal program again?
So Met is looking at it. They actually went to the California Energy Commission to ask for money and trying to find outside partners to, to try to expand on that program, because it was very efficient, very effective. Adele, the new General Manager for Met, came from the city of LA, and so he spearheaded the LA One Water Program. So not only additional supplies, but what can we do in terms of just conservation and use to recycle water? So it, it's on his, his particular agenda.
Yeah, that really was effective. I know a lot of people that took advantage. So we'll look forward to hearing from you, and in the meantime, we'll continue to conserve.
Madam Mayor, could I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Also, I want to, just wanted to say that the cooperation between Rancho Water and the city actually goes both ways. It's not just the city cooperating with them, but one of the things that they were very instrumental with helping us on is the renegotiation of our power purchase agreement for the Smear Solar Project.
Yeah.
Particularly Eva was very helpful and instrumental in helping and kind of guiding us through that process, because they had been through that process in the past. So that partnership and collaboration goes both ways between the city and the district.
Well, that's wonderful, because that was a very critical project for the city as well. So thank you again for your partnership, and, you know, we look forward to working with you cooperatively again for as long as we are here.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As we do have a redistricting public hearing, we will go ahead and ask you to go ahead and take that first. As you will recall, the law requires us to go ahead and hold that at the beginning of the meeting, as close to the publicly noticed time as possible.
Right.
So with your consensus, I can go ahead and give a brief staff report. Our consultants are here.
Okay, great.
And we have three email public comments.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
All right. So with that, I'll go ahead and invite up Shalise Tilton, Consultant with National Demographic Corp. You guys will recognize her from last month, I believe it was, to go ahead and give a presentation on our second of the four public hearings. As you will recall, we are required to have two public hearings prior to map draft, draft map drawing, and two after. At this time, we have been to all of the commissions and made presentations on redistricting to all of the commissions, and we've had our first public hearing with the city council. So with that, Shalise, I'll ask you to go ahead and take it away.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Edwards and councilmembers. I want to introduce Kay Vincent. She is a consultant with National Demographics, the same company I am with, and she is also on Temecula's team, supporting us, so you will likely see her face as well. This is going to be a very similar presentation to our last presentation, and that's by design. We know there are people who are just coming on board and, on board and learning about this process for the first time. So I'll be going a little bit more quickly than last time, but we do want to cover all the material, and of course, if you have questions, there'll be an opportunity for that. Before you have the timeline, we have completed the first pre-map draft, draft on August 24th, and tonight, we are here for a second public hearing to get input on the districts and how, how the, how the public wants to see the districts drawn, the composition of those districts. The census data was delayed. Normally, we would have had it back in April. We did get the federal census on October 12th, I'm sorry, August 12th, as we talked about last time, and then the state began its process to zero out all the state and federal prisons and reassign all the state prisoners to their last known home location. That work was completed. They, they had a target of September 20th. We were anxiously waiting by our computers all day, and at midnight on September 20th, they released it. What NDC did is immediately start to verify the data as soon as it came in. And actually, we did find some errors in the methodology that the state used for its citizen voting age population mostly. Most, only, there are only 58 census blocks of total population that were wrong, but about 133,000 census blocks that were of the citizen voting age population. So we informed the state what we found, and yesterday at 7 o'clock, they came out with a revision. So all that to say is we really just didn't get the final numbers until yesterday, and we're going through another verification process. But we were working very closely and quickly to try to get that done so that we, and we will not have a problem staying on target with your project. We will have two draft map hearings, and actually, we're in a period now where we can't even release draft maps. The law requires a three-week mandated cooling-off period, so the public can start to, you know, work with the data that the state has come out with. Then we will start to present draft maps on January 25th, have a second hearing on March 8th for, hopefully for adoption, and of course, you have until April 17th for final adoption. There are federal and state laws that we have to follow. The federal laws, equal population, and then, of course, California has added an extra layer on that. You take the federal census and then readjust it to reassign those state incarcerated persons to their last known home addresses. When we're talking equal population of total population, it's every person, every breathing person, whether they are a US citizen or not US citizen, if they're living within the city of Temecula, they will be counted. And then we were talking, the other federal Voting Rights Act is we can't draw lines in a way that would dilute the voting strength, voting strength of our protected class citizens, and no racial gary-mannering, meaning we can't draw lines solely based on race. It can be a consideration, but not the only consideration. Instead, we have to use factors such as history, shared culture, shared social networks, shared language spoken at homes, all, all other types of factors. The middle column is spelled out in the Fair Maps Act. You followed most of these when you created your map in 2017, but it wasn't required. Now it's a mandate. And not only is it a mandate, the state also prioritized that you shall do it in this order. So the first is geographically contiguous. That's not a problem at all with the current map, and I don't see it being a problem in the future as far as contiguous borders. It just means one single solid border per district, so you can't have a district made up of several different parts. We're talking undivided neighborhoods and undivided communities of interests. So that, this is why these public hearings are important, so we can hear where those neighborhoods are and what those communities of interest are. And if, if there is a concentrated area of a particular community that has shared interests, then we need to be mindful of that, and if it is to their advantage for their fair and effective representation, then to keep them in a single district. Next is easily identifiable boundaries, following major roads, things like creeks, railroads sometimes, freeways, mountainways, things that you're able to describe your district is preferable. And then compactness is not, not necessarily the size of the district or the shape of the district, but it does mean we don't pass, bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. So all of that is in the Fair Maps Act that's in the elections code. Then once we've met all the federal criteria and that state criteria, we can look at other factors, such as trying to reduce the number of people or minimize those amount of voters that are shifted from one election year to a different election year. So right now, each of the districts are assigned an election year, because we don't vote for all five council members. At one time, we vote for two one year and, or one election cycle, and three another election cycle. Those election cycles stay the same, but we have them assigned to districts now, and if we have to adjust borders, hopefully, we can adjust between two districts that have, share the same election year. It's not always possible, but that's a goal. Respecting voters' choices and continuity of office, if it's possible for us to meet all the criteria and the communities of interest that we've heard of and present a map that avoids pairing incumbents in the same district, then we'll present that option. Sometimes it's not always possible. And then preserving the core of the existing districts is often a factor. And again, none of these in the right-hand column are mandates. These are just traditional principles that are often followed. What you're seeing on the screen right now is a demographic summary of what we estimated your total population was going to be. And I'm proud to say we did a pretty darn good job. When we got the prisoner adjusted data on September 20th, I looked up Temecula, and we were only, I think, 237 people off. So we were pretty close. So what you're seeing here, we're hoping is going to hold true. What we won't know is where that, that growth happened. You know, if, if, we are, we have a whole page of methodology, methodology we use to see where that growth was spread out throughout the city. What you're seeing on the screen is where we think it is. We think that districts one and five grew more than districts two, three, and four. So right now, we are not quite population balanced. And when I say population balance, it doesn't need to be exact. There can be a 10% deviation between your least populated district and your greatest populated district. If you look in the right-hand column of this sheet under a percent of deviation, you'll see we're at 14.75. So we're just above 10. So there will be, would need to be some adjustments, you know, if ultimately the council said our, our map, we feel, has done a great job at meeting all those mandated criteria, can we keep it? Well, it looks like that answer, if our estimates hold true, which so far, the total population, they're holding pretty darn true, we'll need to make some adjustments. You get that 14% by, by just simply adding the least populated, which is negative 8.71 in District 3, and add it to the highest populated, which is 6.04. You see, you get the 14. The citizen voting age population is an important category. This is what the Federal Voting Rights Act, if someone were to challenge the map and to see how good of a job we did at drawing districts that helped to improve the strength of our protected class groups, they would look at the citizen voting age population. I have had an ongoing cough, and finally yesterday, I said I'm going to get tested for COVID, and it is negative, but still doesn't make the cough.
Well, that's good news.
Any more fun, yes. I thought I'm not going to Temecula without a test. The citizen voting age population, we have it broken down by ethnicity and by race. And so what you're seeing here, where it says percent Hispanic, that's also Hispanic slash Latino. That's what the Census Bureau asks on its question. They say, are you Hispanic or Latino? In the over, in the right-hand column, you can see that our overall percentage for the city is 24%. So typically, if there are areas that have high concentration, and not all jurisdictions have, have large, or, you know, highly concentrated areas, then you can see higher percentage in a, in a district or so. Actually, in Temecula, we don't have one single area that's higher. There's a good spread. You can see in District 5 is our highest, the existing district is our highest at 29%. So our target population will just be about 22,000, just a little bit more than 22,000 for each of the five districts. This is a color-coded map that shows us some of those concentrated areas. As was pointed out last time, areas that are not populated will show up great big pink or yellow, and that could just be one person that was counted in a particular area or a few people. So don't be concerned by that. But you're looking for the greens and the yellows and the pinks that show the higher areas of those concentrations of our, now, citizen voting age population, those are US citizens who are 18 years of age. Asian-American population, you'll see some concentration in Area, Areas 1 and also in Area 5. Some other things we can look at, this is, this is a concentration map showing where we have more residents who rent their homes as opposed to homeowners. So again, you're looking at the, the higher percentage of renters are in those pinks, yellows, and the green colors. Sometimes that will help to find a particular type of a community or a community that has shared interests. This one is the income, income of, this is showing 75%. The pink is, is those, these are, I'm sorry, these are residents who make 75K or more, and I realize that's not on my map. I need to change that, so that's more obvious for you. But those residents make 75,000 or more is what this income is showing, and so the pinks and the yellows and the greens are where we see those that have those, the 75K or over. These are the percentage of homes that have children at home. Do want to point out that all maps, if, if a member of the public were to choose to submit a map, we professionally produce it. NDC will be producing probably two or three options for the council, as well as any maps that are submitted by the public will be professionally produced. This is similar, in a similar fashion, this happens to be the map that was adopted in 2017. And with each of those maps, we'll be preparing a demographic summary. The demographic summary is useful when you're looking and analyzing maps and comparing maps to see where you have the higher proportions of these different categories. So if something was of interest to you, perhaps language fluency, you could look at that category and see. category and see if there's one particular district that has a higher concentration. That's a pretty good indicator that that particular map has captured that community in one district. The purpose of this public hearing, we'll be open the public hearing, hearing from the public, and then afterwards, hoping hearing from the council on what are those neighborhoods, those defined neighborhoods, and what are the geographical boundaries of those neighborhoods? Also, we want to hear, keep in mind that we have to translate it to a map. So while I may have a map, I do have a map of Temecula's neighborhood associations. It may not be what the public fills their neighborhoods are. Or there may be neighborhoods that aren't depicted on that map. So we do want to hear, what are your neighborhoods, and what are those boundaries, or what do you share in common with other people in this particular geographic area? Also, beyond neighborhoods, we also hear other things that bring communities together. Sometimes, it's things such as water or the threat of fire, traffic. There are other things that brings communities together, and we want to hear what those communities are and if they would benefit from being in a single district. Or if perhaps, they would benefit from having more than one council member. And so, say, the northern part is represented by one district, and the southern part is represented by another district. If there are those communities that would benefit, we want to hear from that as well. And finally, do have a definition of communities of interest, and I'm going to go ahead and read that because it is important. A community of interest is a population that shares a common social or economic interest that should be included within a single district for purposes of its fair and effective representation. So first, you define if there are shared common and social interests, and then you have to determine if they benefit from being in a single district. And communities of interest are not affiliations with or relationships with political parties' incumbents or political candidates. This is my last slides, just to prompt discussion. We want to hear, what are your neighborhoods? What are the boundaries? What are other notable areas in the city, and what are their boundaries? And hopefully, I'll be taking notes. I'll be taking notes on what those neighborhoods are and communities of interest. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I can do so now or after the public hearing.
Any questions? Anyone?
I do have one question.
Go ahead, Stu.
So could you put up the map, the current district map, just for discussion purposes? Because I can't think of what the communities... Yeah. So going forward, it would benefit me to actually see where the communities of interest are. And maybe keep it up.
So Councilmember Stewart-
Yes.
Perhaps what we can do is see if we can't capture some community of interest discussion that we had when we went to districts in 2017 and pass that along to you, because that would be incorporated in the current map that you are seeing here. So as a reminder, as our demographer was indicating, communities of interest could be HOAs.
Right.
Communities of interest could be, you know, our senior population that happens to live in the single mobile home park in town. Communities of interest could be particular areas where we know 20% to 25% of our population does not speak English as their primary language at home. If that is a group, a segment of the population that is concentrated in a particular area, that would perhaps be a community of interest. So I think that would probably be the best way, because we couldn't necessarily tell you that's what we're seeking input on right now, is if you know of any communities of interest for this next go-round of districting that you would like us to keep in mind, other than the HOAs and, you know, those things that we've already identified, that is, this is the time to let us know that. And in the meantime, we can go ahead and see if we can't get you the previously identified communities of interest.
Is that good, Stu?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just first off, great job, by the way. That was a great presentation, so thank you. If I can just get a copy of that, just a hard copy, that'd be excellent, just so I can kind of do some of my homework, too, and continue. So I appreciate it, but great job today.
Yeah, yeah. We'll go ahead and share all of the information with the full city council.
Okay, so no questions, and so we need to go ahead. Do we have any public comments?
We do. I have, if you would like to open the public hearing, Madam Mayor, I have three emailed comments.
Okay, then, I'm going to open the public hearing, and could we please hear the public comments?
Yes. So the first comment is from Martha Howard. She indicates, I'd like to bring to your attention that a commission is as good as its intended purpose. The Ready Commission serves as a liaison between our community and you. For this reason, I'm respectfully requesting that you consider community involvement in redistricting in our city. The Ready Commission, the demographer, and members of our community can meet and discuss district boundaries and options. Again, only you can make that happen. During the past district drawing, the community involvement, other than selecting the already-created maps, was absent. The council did not facilitate our participation, claiming time constraints, since Temecula went from at-large to by-district voting. Presently, you have an opportunity to let us participate. This is the second of four public hearings for redistricting, and once again, I'm emphasizing the need for the council to elevate community participation beyond a public comment. We want to get involved. The next comment is from Ira Robinson. Consistent with my August 24th comment to the council, it continues to be my belief that leaving the lion's share of the redistricting process to a city-hired and city-paid demographer or other consultant without significant public participation and involvement would be unwise and unfair, especially where communities of interest and compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act are concerned. It is my request that the council take whatever actions are required to assure full and complete public involvement in this year's redistricting process, whether through the Ready Commission, a redistricting committee, public workshops, or otherwise, all with the demographer's active participation, and with special emphasis on the all-important communities of interest and on compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. To do otherwise would constitute a repeat of the city's 2017 approach at a time when doing so is no longer in the city's best interest. In short, the people of Temecula should be intimately involved in the redistricting process, trusted with the necessary information, involved in identifying their communities of interest, and in ensuring compliance with the Voting Rights Act. Thank you for your continued attention to this matter. And the last public comment is from Tammy Sims. I am writing concerning item number nine, redistricting for the city council district boundaries. Tonight is the second of four public hearings, and I would like to encourage the use of the already-established Ready Commission along with the special citizens group with the drawing of the lines. There are already public groups formed and providing information and guidance about their own communities with the California Redistricting Commission for the state in redrawing the lines. I hope that we are allowed to be a part of our own city in the drawing here. I applaud you for establishing the Ready Commission and believe that they would be an asset in this process. I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Madam Mayor, that is the end of email or in-person public comments on this item, and you're welcome to close the public hearing.
All right, then, seeing no further, I will close the public hearing and accept comments, discussion from city council members. Anything? Stu, go ahead.
Well, as I'm looking at the map, I'm looking at District 2 having Paseo del Sol, and Paloma del Sol is in 3. And to me, those are two contiguous communities that really kind of share the same interest. So that's, when I look at that, to me, that's the obvious when we're talking about communities of interest. To me, if I were in Paseo del Sol, I'd kind of want to be in the same thought process as, or have the same representation as the person who has Paloma del Sol and Crown Hill. So that's the only thing that kind of jumped out at me when I was looking at the map. And I'm sure we did it for population.
It was, actually, that's my district, is District 3, but I do have Paloma and Paseo.
Well, Paseo is in 2. You might have part of Paseo.
I have part of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Across from...
And again, that's my point, is-
And it's divided, I don't have the map in front of me, but it's divided by, what street is it? It's a street.
Well, it looks like it's divided by the loop in Paloma del Sol. So part of the loop, it goes up, touches the loop, comes across, and then comes down.
Yeah, can we put the map up so that everyone can see?
Yeah.
Because I can pull it up on my phone, but I got it.
Yeah, see the top of 2? That actually goes all the way to the Paloma del Sol loop, which, to me, that's part of Paloma and Paseo.
Yeah, now, there was a reason for that. I questioned that in the beginning. There was an area right below from Margarita over 2, about Pabba, and I would have gained, or District 3, had we taken that piece, would have gained an extra, a lot, like 15,000. So that would have put us way out of balance, because I had the same concerns when we first did the maps. But the numbers just didn't support it. That would have put District 3 way over.
Right.
And I think when the maps were first completed, District 3 was one of the larger districts, you know, populated districts. And now, I looked on the map, it's the smallest one. So that may change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may be one of the areas that changes.
But that's something I was just, you know, it's more for the demographer than anybody.
Yeah.
Just kind of keep that in mind, that that's part of-
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
A community there.
If we were going to do it the way that you think, it would go all the way down to Deportola and straight across-
Yeah.
-to Butterfield, yes. And that was what I did ask about that, you know, when we did the original maps a couple of years ago. So we'll have to just wait and see what happens.
Right.
Councilmember Stewart, just for clarity purposes, so we can go ahead and note this, you have identified the two separate HOAs, Paloma del Sol and Paseo del Sol.
Right.
And you have indicated that they could be a community of interest. Can you identify for us what shared interest they would have?
Other than the fact they're very, they're literally slammed right next to each other, so all the major arteries are shared. If there's any kind of issues that happen, I think it would be an issue for both of those communities. So to me, that's the shared interest, is literally they're frickin' frac. And so I don't know how you split those two up.
It went down, it went across Lena Way is the street that it...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we just needed to know kind of what their shared interest was.
Right.
So I think that's helpful to note, that they have shared main arterials.
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, the communities, I believe, were built around the same time, right?
Yeah, Paseo, Paloma was first.
Paloma was first, yeah. But within a year or two of each other?
Right.
Okay, so just the makeup of the demographics and so on and so forth might be consistent as well?
And literally, when it was built, it was built as an extension, was just giving a different name. So Paloma, Paseo, it's just, you know, that was one track, this is the other, and they're literally interconnected. So that's-
Yeah, they are.
That's my thought.
Okay, and same developer?
Yeah, I don't know.
Different, okay.
Different merchant builders are in there, so.
Yeah.
Another thing to note, Randy, do we look for, I know that that entire neighborhood, both the neighborhoods and others in District 2, you know, the schools that they attend, school district boundaries and things like that. So, you know, that would be what used to be Sparken Elementary, it's Rancho Vista High School now, plus TVHS, plus Paloma Elementary, and Vintage Hills. I mean, there, I have, I live in school central, so I'm surrounded with like seven schools within, you know, half a mile of the house. So that's another consideration, right?
Yes, yes. So we will definitely note similar elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools as a matter of interest for Paloma del Sol and Paseo del Sol.
Any questions or comments? Zach, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment. Clearly, this is an extremely important process that we're going through. And, you know, we heard in the public comments, Mayor Protemron and I have met with residents, and I think there's some value, given that that next meeting isn't till the end of January, to have some sort of forward-facing, you know, charrette or-
I agree.
Something out in the public. So if that's something that we can fit into this timeline, I think it's very valuable to, again, sort of increase that participation.
It'd be nice if we could have, you know, when we get the numbers, the final numbers, so we'll have really something to discuss.
And if we could do it not in here, I think, you know, we need to do it somewhere, maybe even in the conference center, or somewhere where it's a little more of a relaxed setting.
I agree, too. Anything? Nothing? Nothing? All right. Matt, go ahead.
So, yeah, so I'd like to take that just a little bit further and say, if we're going to do that, one of the things I'd like to see is, you know, we have the online mapping tool, I understand. So can you clarify for me, is that mapping tool the same mapping tool that's being used by the consultants in their efforts, or does it interface well?
So there's a lot of mapping tools out there.
Right.
And some are free, and some are paid, and all of that. But we can definitely work with the consultants to, if you're suggesting that we incorporate some element of a mapping tool into a public workshop, we can definitely see if there's some consistency between either the mapping tool that the demographer is currently using or an online mapping tool that is readily accessible to folks at home right now for consistency on overlay. Is that what you were...
Well, yeah, because I mean, I was just assuming that-
I just wanted to explain the difference, maybe.
You know, if you're using a tool that's not compatible or not easily crosswalked between your, you know, software, then there's just a lot of additional, like, we could get a lot of people engaged in drawing maps and, you know, talking about their communities of interest and all that. But if we're, you know, if you get 1,000 maps produced, and none of them are compatible with the software you're using, then I'd assume that's problematic.
Right. Any shape file, we can bring directly over. But we also encourage people who don't have access and just maybe have a paper map or a Chamber of Commerce map, we can take those as well. And then we integrate them into, we use MapTune for our professional software.
Okay, great. Anything, Jess? Anything? No?
Just-
Go ahead, Matt.
One more.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up on the question about the commissions and all of that. You know, I mean, that was one of the reasons when we first initiated Ready, that was part of the conversation over a year ago, was, you know, we lacked a public-facing front on the redistricting process the first time around. This forum doesn't work well for that, clearly, because nobody stepped forward to the mic. And I'm sure you all have an opinion about the map, but chose not to. But, you know, but it's really easier if you've got maps on the table, you know, and to be able to do that. And I know, you know, we've talked multiple times at this, you know, level, too, saying, well, Ready, as you're looking for items to bring forward to that commission, this one makes a lot of sense. So where are we with that? Is that something that we, you know, if we're going to have a public workshop, do we tie it in with that, or how best to move forward? Because I would assume you're looking for a little bit of guidance on that as well.
Please, yes, absolutely. We would ask that if you would like us to have an additional public workshop, whether it's a charrette, whether it's a tabletop exercise, whatever it is, if you want that hosted by the Ready Commission, we would like to have that direction now, general direction from the city council to go ahead and follow that up. And we can host it in the conference center, and, you know, just invite the HOAs and everybody else and the Ready Commission. We can notice it as a special meeting, and then go ahead and host it that way.
Yeah, because it really needs to be interactive. I mean, you really need the tables, you need the maps, you need the markers, you know.
We need the open discussion between neighbors, too, so.
But not to put you on the spot, Ms. Baker, but, you know, but is this, you know, I mean, and city manager as well, you know, and Randy, I know you're the director for that interface as well. You know, are we at that point with that commission where that makes sense?
I'm seeing Chairperson Baker nod her head in agreement. And I, too, professionally, I think that's a perfect fit and venue to do that interactive workshop at their existing commission meeting, or if they already have a full agenda, we would have to be a special one, which we can accommodate that as well. So yes, the answer is yes, I think that's appropriate.
And we could do it in such a way that the commissioners are fully briefed on, you know, the history, since the commission wasn't here, on the history and how things work and the participation, because we want as many people to participate as possible so that we get that, you know, that diversity of opinion on this. So I think that would be great.
So we have enough time to do that between now and the next meeting.
We do, we would definitely have to work with our demographer as well, because obviously, they would need to be present.
Yes.
But we could, we see where we could maybe have Chair Baker and the demographer work together to facilitate a tabletop exercise between the community so that they can get not only education on the redistricting process in general and how we arrived at the 2017 maps, but then- and how we arrived at the 2017 maps, but then also provide some input into, you know, what kind of things they might like to see as far as communities of interest in the future districts. And again, you saw the existing map. It's, the suggested maps are not going to be a complete redo of that. Most likely, you're going to have boundaries go one way or another.
Right. And so I can attest that Chair Baker has done many, many workshops and charrettes. And so, you know, that's right up her alley. And I think the commissioners would love to do it. And just from speaking to them about other participation, I know they would.
We are willing and we are well-able. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last. Can you pull up on the maps, there was the one map that showed economic considerations? Yeah. So, you know, it's interesting, Stu, what you were talking about earlier, right? I mean, there's your map, right? I mean, I mean, some of this stuff is Oh, he left. I didn't even notice he's gone. Well
Temporary.
Stu, I know you can hear me if you're in the restroom.
Shh, you weren't supposed to say that.
The feed goes into there, so.
There are students here. Can't you see that?
I don't want to make this awkward for you, buddy, but
Sorry.
Anyway. So, but, you know, I think the, you know, this could really be informative. So like, you know, if District One, for instance, has to lose some spaces, right? But you have that big blue section there that's, you know, different. You have the big green section there that's more contiguous with District Two as well, right? So I mean, I don't want to lose sight of this because, you know, what he was speaking of earlier fits not just on, because we're, you know, drawing arbitrary, you know, lines on the map is one thing where we think the communities are. But this, and then you had a few others that kind of showed other, you know, census data as well. This really is what, I think, can help drive those conversations, right? Like, there you are.
Okay, I just, I just want you to know it was my idea to pipe the meeting into the restrooms when we built City Hall. And that's exactly why.
So it's not awkward at all. But see what I'm showing on the map there is that, you know, like, that explains the argument, right? And, you know, and then if you're going to cut and paste from other districts, then, you know, if Two has to gain something, then that blue or that green makes, you know what I mean? And then for whatever reason, we've taken Red Hawk and we split that one in half. It might not be a bad idea to keep that all together into District One, right? Because it's actually one named community.
Depending on numbers, we may be able to do that.
Right. And so we might, you know, might want to have that ability to, and again, I don't know, because it's hard to do that here. But for us, at some point, not just the community, but for the council as well, to, I don't know how quickly you can make maps on the fly to, you know, adjust numbers and all of that. But, you know, it's hard to make those determinations now. Maybe it's easier for us to send this to you separately and say, well, this makes sense, maybe for a shift. If you need to grab numbers into District Three, it makes sense to jump down and pick up the rest of that, like Stu was talking about. And, but then you're going to have to make up for District Two. So maybe it makes sense to carve over here.
You're giving me a headache, Matt.
As there's this trickle-down effect, I get it.
Yeah.
But the lines we had seemed a little arbitrary the first go-around anyway. And so this level of information, I think, can be extremely informative in that. Because these are the communities of like, you know, and I mean, when you look at just the economic associated, these were, they follow the developments that occurred at the same time, right? And those communities that fell into that track that was built at that moment in our history. So, you know, so I think we've got a good framework to move forward. We just need to, you know, make sure we're looking at all the data. So, anyway, thank you.
And they are fairly, I mean, they were fairly symmetrical. And then the council members were located, I mean, we were very centrally located in all of those districts at the time, which worked out, you know, really nicely. So any other questions? No? No? All right. So we need a motion for
Actually, Madam Mayor, this was just to
Oh, it's, yeah, it is.
Conduct a public hearing. You've opened it, you've closed it.
Yeah, there's nothing.
And we'll be, we'll go ahead and move forward with the general direction from the council to do a public workshop of sorts through, with the Ready Commission as well as the demographer over the next few months. And we'll try to schedule that prior to the January hearing.
Question for you, Peter. So council members, because of the Brown Act, were not really able to attend those and participate. Is that correct?
We will look into that. And if necessary, we could set up some type of way that the whole council could participate.
I would like to, just because I know my, well, I've been here forever. I know my neighborhoods really well. I know the streets. And I think we, each of us does. And so that would be helpful to me. And I'd like to hear what people say.
Mr. City Attorney, I will work with you offline. Perhaps a joint meeting of the City Council and the Ready Commission as a special public workshop may end up working.
Yeah, that would definitely work.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd love that. Is that okay, Tiffany? That'd be great. Okay, that'd be great. All right, so then we're going to go back to where we left off. Let's turn the pages.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have a certificate of recognition to Laraya Gill.
We are right there. So certificate of recognition from Laraya Gill and MMA. That is fascinating. So come, please come down and tell us a little bit about yourself. And I have the certificate for you right here. So let me read this to you first. And then as Mayor Protem Ron is bringing you the certificate, I'd love to hear your story. So this is from the City of Temecula. And it's a certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula to Laraya?
Yeah.
Good. Laraya Gill, IMMAF Youth MMA Champion. City of Temecula is proud to recognize Laraya Gill for competing and winning the title of International Mixed Martial Arts Federation Youth Mixed Martial Arts World Champion in her category at the Worlds in Sofia, Bulgaria. Laraya was invited to be part of Team USA for Youth Worlds in Sofia, Bulgaria after competing and winning in a U.S. Team Qualifier Youth MMA Event in April of this year in Florida. There were 331 competitors from 23 countries that participated in the Worlds event in Sofia, Bulgaria. Laraya competed against athletes from the Ukraine, Russia, Bulgaria and Ireland. Laraya was able to finish all four matches by submissions on an average of 30 seconds against her opponents. You just might want to keep your distance, Matt, so. We congratulate Laraya for winning this prestigious title and wish her continued success in her future endeavors. And I had the privilege of signing this for you. And it's on behalf of the entire City Council and the City of Temecula. And I can't wait to hear, how did you end up being in this sport?
Thank you.
Get right in front of the mic so we can hear you.
Okay, so when I was about nine, my dad put me in jiu-jitsu for self-defense. And at first, I did not like it. But then, once I started doing it and getting better, making friends, I really enjoyed it. Then I got into striking and all the other martial arts. And yeah.
Wow, that is very, very impressive. Yeah, congratulations. So we can give you a hand.
Thank you.
Did she hurt your hand, Matt? When she shook your hand, did it hurt a little bit? Yeah, there you go, shaking that hand. Congratulations. I'm so proud of you. You're going to continue. You're continuing, right? So tell us what, you know, come back and come back. Tell us what's next. So what happens now? You're the best in the world.
My main goal is to get into the UFC, because it, become a UFC champion. But closer is just keep on training and getting better and better.
So tell us how old you are again?
Thirteen.
Wow. So you have a great future ahead of you. Yeah, so congratulations. And, you know, stay in touch so we can, you know, we'll keep track of you. I'm going to watch for you in the news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. All right, so we have a proclamation for Dyslexia Awareness Month. And I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and read this. So is Dana here?
Actually, Madam Mayor, we received notice a little bit earlier. And Dana unfortunately is not going to be able to make it. We will, however, go ahead and mail the proclamation to you.
Okay, so just let me read this to you a little bit, just a little bit. And then, Stu, I want, would you mind? I kind of put you on the spot. So would you mind talking about, you know, dyslexia and, you know, what the impacts are and things like that? Okay, so the International Dyslexia Association's mission is to create a future for all individuals who struggles with dyslexia and other related reading differences so that they may have richer, more robust lives and access to the tools and resources they need. Dyslexia often inherited affects all segments of society regardless of race, income or educational background. Dyslexia affects the way that brain processes information and characterized by difficulties with reading, writing, spelling occurring at all levels of intelligence. And in undiagnosed cases of dyslexia can be detrimental to a young person's self-confidence, learning and development. And while dyslexia can make reading more difficult with the right instruction, almost all individuals with dyslexia can learn to read. And greater recognition and understanding are necessary to ensure that individuals living with dyslexia are accurately identified and provided with appropriate services so that they can lead maximally productive lives. And I say, Stu, you lead a maximally productive life indeed. So you were very, and I think you stepping up and telling people, telling your story when you first got on the council, helped more people than you can possibly know. So why don't you just share a little bit of that with us?
Well, back in the 60s and 70s, there was no such thing as dyslexia. So you were just considered a slow reader. And so, and for me, it was actually a very good thing because it got me out of school. So I literally looked for every opportunity I could to get out of school. So I took a construction class where I built two houses my junior and senior year. I went to barber school, which is what I do today. But yeah, it's, I'm an audible learner. I don't learn through reading. I mean, it's, it's not that I can't read, I can read. It's very difficult to read. I have to read something three times before I can actually, you know, get the gist. So, yeah, I mean, it's a very difficult, but very, you learn to cope. And you learn to kind of work around it versus fight against it. So for me personally, it actually worked very well. And like she said, I'm reasonably successful.
He's very successful.
And it doesn't, like, it's not an intelligence thing either. I mean, I actually have a very high IQ. And, but when it comes to that, it's just a jumbled mess, so.
And so thankfully, they're able to diagnose children at a very early age now. And so treatment is totally different. And there's no shame in having this. Obviously, it's inherited. And I'm just so happy. And I'm very proud of you for doing that because I think it helped a lot.
And three of my grandkids have it too. So that goes to the hereditary part of it.
Yeah, and you can help them as well. So thank you, Stu, we appreciate it. And we're going to go ahead and send this to the lady who was not able to be here. And then finally, we have proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. So Chief Crater's here. And Elsa, you're here too. Come on down. Congratulations. It's Fire Prevention Week. You guys kind of do that every week though, don't you? You try anyway, huh? So I'm going to tell you a secret about Elsa. And so correct me if I'm wrong, but she is one of three, right?
Yeah.
Persons who has her degree in chemical engineering.
And mechanical.
And mechanical. And she's also the fire marshal. So that helps her infinitely in, when she goes in to help businesses, you know, make sure that they comply because they deal with chemicals. And of course, you're dealing with machinery and combustibles and things like that. So I'm very proud of you for being one of three, only three. Is it in the state?
No, down here in the area.
In the area? That's, I'm very proud of you. So just let me tell you. So this is a City of Temecula proclamation. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires took the lives of over 3,704 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And Fire Department in the United States responded to 358,000 home fires. And whereas when a smoke alarm or carbon monoxide alarm sounds, people need to respond immediately by exiting the home as quickly as possible. And if your smoke alarm begins to chirp, it means that the batteries are running low and need to be placed or the smoke replaced, or the smoke alarm is more than 10 years old and it needs to be replaced. So we need to test all smoke and CO alarms monthly. If there's someone in the house that is deaf or hard of hearing, install a bed shaker or strobe lights to alert that person of the fire. Temecula's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Temecula's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And the City of Temecula is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Temecula. And the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and become familiar with what the different alarm sounds mean. I, Mary Ann Edwards, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, hereby proclaim October 3rd to the 9th, 2021, to be Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this state, we urge all citizens to recognize the different sound alarms make and the action needed based upon the sound. It is critical to preventing injury and death from fire during Fire Prevention Week 2021 and all the time and to support public safety activities and efforts of Temecula Fire and Emergency Services. And so Mayor Protem Ron's going to bring this down and present it to you. So talk a little bit about how busy have you been? And especially during COVID, how busy were you?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor Edwards, council and staff, and especially for recognizing the Fire Department during this time. We truly appreciate all of your continuous support. During COVID, it was very challenging, as we all know. But I have to say that our department did an amazing job. We never skipped a beat. Not just Fire Department, we work well with all the departments, Public Works, Building and Safety Planning. We all continue just to keep moving forward, kept everything moving. Inspections kept going, construction kept going, inspections for annuals continued to go. And the numbers are there. And it has not slowed down. If anything, it's doing the exact opposite.
It was in the hundreds and hundreds.
Absolutely.
Of inspections.
Yeah. And we're averaging right now, I mean, right now, we are just finishing up September and we are well over, I think, three or 4,000 inspections on top of all the annual inspections that we continue to do. Permits, construction is not slowing down. We all see it. It's, the community right now is growing. It's not going, it's not stopped. So we're very proud with that. And I couldn't be more pleased with our staff.
Well, and we hear wonderful reports on you and the staff. And I think we just received something recently commending you for service and being so quick to respond. And so on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula and a very proud fire chief, if you'd like to step in and give us a little, a little word here, thank you.
No, I oversee the prevention bureau in the City of Temecula as well. And Elsa has been amazing, a leader in that department. Even through COVID, you know, we didn't have the opportunity to kind of work remotely. So you have to lay eyes on things and make sure things are right for public safety. Also, the work they do, I think, keeps us, keeps us safe as firefighters. Because if buildings aren't properly maintained, don't have the proper alarm sprinkler systems and things in place, then we can end up getting injured or even killed because the buildings aren't correct. So we do really appreciate her efforts and her team's efforts. And we'll continue to do that through this year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, Elsa, thank you. Please thank everyone in the department. And we're very, very proud of you. And we appreciate you. And we're very thankful to have you with the city.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to board and commission reports. So first, we have planning commission with Gary Watts. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, staff, audience. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. We have a quick review of our last meeting. I promise it'll be short. We recommended approval of the updated housing element and public safety element of our We recommended approval of the updated housing element and public safety element of our city's general plan. At our last meeting, that will be coming before the City Council on October 12th. And I know you're aware of the tight timelines on, on these, these items. Recently, we, after our meeting, we received approval from the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission and the California Department of Orastery, I think that's CalFire. And they approved the elements too. So it looks like everything's going smoothly and will come to you very soon. Next slide is Summers Bend. And there we approved new architectural styles and plans for two planning areas, 62 total. As you know, Summers Bend continues to progress as they progress. So as they build housing, they are permitted to continue building more housing.
And that's the fastest area in town that's growing.
It's, yeah, it's, there are a lot of houses out there.
Yes.
There, I understand from the developer that they're going fast too. They have a lot of business. And if at the bottom, next slide, you can see that Summers Bend, that's in the northeast part of the city, for those that don't know. Marietta Hot Springs Road is at the very top. And the two sections, 17B and 18B, are the areas where we approved the new architectural styles. Three different ones for each one, and here they are. And you can see, this is probably boring for a lot of people, but this is what we deal with on the planning commission over and over again. So it's really quite, quite thorough and it, it, it demands a lot of attention.
Students, you wondered how homes were built and approved and, you know, who got to make all those decisions. And so it's the planning commission and City Council.
That's true. And if people don't like what we do, they have the right to appeal any decision to the City Council. And hopefully, we haven't seen a lot of that in the last few years. So hopefully, we're doing a good job and the public's accepting what we're doing.
And I think you are doing a great job and the homes look beautiful.
And that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And now we can move on to Ms. Tiffany Baker with the ready commission. So you have a little bit on your plate now, surprise, surprise.
I know. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and members of the community, and my fellow commissioners. Welcome. Thank you for having us here today. We are just so excited to share all the wonderful things we're doing. We received a, an update regarding the workforce development programs. We provided lots of recommendations and we had a lot of conversations around how we can partner and how we can help our kids. That came up a lot, just youth. That seems to be the resounding concern from the commissioners. How are we reaching youth and strengthening them? Also, the commission received an update from Charles Walker and Cassandra about the workforce development programs. And the commission had lots of input in terms of working with special needs community and finding out what we were doing. And we're doing a lot of great things we didn't know. So that's really good that we are partnering with agricultural communities to give our special needs community an opportunity to, to gain life skills as well as workforce development. I just think that's fantastic personally, you know? So we learned about that. And then we consider opportunities to ho- host multicultural events and we were so excited about that, yes. And we gave a lot of recommendations and requests from you guys. And so we're really grateful for the commission is picking up in its work and its efforts. And I personally want to thank the community for their input. They've been coming to our meetings, they've been getting to know us and understand the purpose. And it is, we're growing and coming more together in our community understanding. Thank you, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You've accomplished so much already and you have a lot to look forward to. And we're excited to be going down that road with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have our public safety report. So we have Captain Zach Hall. How are you?
Fine. Good evening, Mayor, Council. All right, go through the stats here for our calls for service. You'll notice a trend. Calls for service are increasing, however, crime continues to trend down. Year-to-date, 2021, calls for service, 56,204 as compared to 54,273 same time this year. Month of August, 7,099 compared to 66,76. Our average response times in August compared to 2020, 6.17 for your priority ones, 17.14.
That's minutes.
Correct, minutes. Priority twos, 17.14. Priority threes, 27.26. And your fours are 41.31. Here's where you'll notice your crime trends. This is year-to-date, 2021 compared to 2020. Total violent crimes, 291 to 315. Your homicides is 2 to 1. Rapes, 18 to 18. Robberies, 38 to 58. Aggravated assaults, 233 to 238. Burglaries, 306 to 352. Motor vehicle theft, 371 to 363. We've recovered out of those 371, we've recovered 252. Your thefts, 1,576 to 1,434. And your arson's is 1 to 3. Couple of your arrest stats, this will probably be the last time I include these in here as this team's now been running for a while unless you want me to continue to include them. But obviously, I can give them to you anytime. Your felony arrests for your metro team, August were six. Misdemeanors, whether on view or warrants, were 13. DUIs, eight. Traffic and parking citations, 185. And business and bar checks, 57. Again, this is specific to Old Town area. Your traffic team, total citations issued, 1,190 in August. Hazardous citations, 878. Non-hazardous, 120. Parking, 192. Your traffic collisions are at 64 versus 55. 19 injury, 30 non-injury, and 38 DUI arrests. Specific just to the traffic team. That doesn't count DUI arrests made by patrol.
So I have a question for you. So we have calls were up, but crime was down.
Correct.
How does that work? I mean, you're getting, you're getting...
Good policing?
Yeah. Yeah. So calls were, calls were up, were people calling because they had concerns and then maybe you, you know, arrive and you take a report and then you're working on it?
Yes. Generally, the number of calls for service, and this is, I broke them down for you before. They are generally people who've called our 911 system or our non-emergency line. Now deputies on patrol can generate calls for service, although that's not the bulk of those numbers. Like for instance, on a flag down. That's where a deputy's driving around on routine patrol, a resident flags him down, they stop, they engage in conversation, the resident says, oh, my lawnmower went missing. The deputy can then generate a theft call for service. It goes into that number.
Okay, that, that makes perfect sense. But thank you. I love to see the numbers continue to go down. Stu does too.
Right? Okay, two things. The larceny and theft. I noticed that, what is that? Explain that.
Larceny is theft. There's grand theft, petty theft. Certain non-burglary charges get included in there. That's just the way they labeled the stat. It could be just called theft. None of us in the industry, most people don't go, hey, it's petty larceny. We say it's petty theft.
Okay.
And burglary versus robbery?
Well, okay, so burglary, this is a misconception. People will say, hey, I came home, my house was robbed. Well, your house can't get robbed. Burglary is when somebody breaks into your home and takes some of your items.
And you're not there?
And you're, well, you could be there.
Okay.
Right? Maybe you're asleep and they take it. The way it becomes robbery is when you take somebody's personal property from them with some kind of force or fear. And so if they take, take something from you, that becomes a robbery. Somebody breaks into your locked vehicle and takes something out of it, it's burglary. If they open your door because it's unlocked and they take something out, it's theft. So there's, there are some nuances to these crimes, right? There's, there's amount thresholds, there are how the crime's perpetrated. Sometimes the intent of the criminal dictates what type of crime it's going to be. Sometimes it's the victim's perception of what happens that dictates how the person will be charged.
Now, I have a question about the priority ones going down, but what's the explanation for two, three, and four going up?
Well...
Or is there an explanation?
Yeah. Pete Thorson answer, it depends.
Yeah.
Right? There's so many variables in there that can drive that number. And I can surely look at it and tell you, one of the main things that drives the response times, you know, usually in these changes, is sometimes just traffic, the amount of people on the road, the times of the day that some of these calls are taking place. Like, let's say, for instance, we have a rash of, say, residential or vehicle burglaries and they all happen between 7:00 in the morning and 9:00. Well, traffic's a little heavier then. So it's those kinds of variables occasionally. And what actually drives a lot of this discrepancy in these times is somewhere along the line, there's a data point error. And for example, a deputy goes on scene of a call and they use a button on their computer to alert dispatch and all the other deputies that they've arrived. But for some reason, the radio traffic's heavy, the car didn't communicate correctly with dispatch, and nobody knows in the system, they got there and the clock keeps running. And so what it would cause me to do is say, okay, well, out of these 7,000 calls, the vast majority are priorities twos and threes. I would have to go through and audit each one. Another one that really drives a discrepancy here, and that's why these are average response times. Because a, a deputy will go to, say, a shoplifting call. And maybe it took the deputy two hours to get there, maybe even longer, always a petty theft shoplifting call. Well, through their investigation, they realize that on the way out, the criminal pushed a loss prevention officer. The deputy realizes, hey, this isn't a shoplifting, this is a robbery, right? Because now they've taken this piece of property using force. So the deputy alerts dispatch, hey, this is actually a robbery. Please change my call for service from a past priority four shoplifting call to a robbery. Dispatch goes, sure. They change it, it becomes a priority one. Now you have this two and a half hour response time for what is now in the system changed to a priority one. And we physically have to go through and audit those and say, okay, all, most of our priority ones take like two minutes to get there. And then you're like, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. And then 1,000 calls down, there's a 48-minute one. And you have to remove it. And I generally don't do those audits because, again, it's an average. And if you average them out over the year, they're pretty close. Monthly, they get a little wonkier.
Six minutes is a very good response time for priority one.
Well, yes, considering, and again, I, I'd like to point out because this, sometimes law enforcement agencies don't all report these the same. We have local law enforcement agencies in our area that are not the Riverside County Sheriff's Department that say their response time is from the time their patrol officer receives the call from service from dispatch. So if you call 911, it pens at 911, it maybe pens in the system, and then they dispatch it and it takes three minutes for the officer to drive there, they call it a three-minute response time. We don't do that. This, our response times are from the time you call 911. From the time the dispatcher picks up the phone, that clock starts running. So for example, these priority ones are six minutes. So you called, you call 911, the dispatcher answers, and you start explaining to the dispatcher what happened. What's going on, who's involved, where you live, and they're figuring all that out. They're entering it into the system. The public safety answering point is the first person that answers the phone. They then shoot that email up to radio. Radio reads it, interprets it, and sends it out to a deputy. The deputy drives, gets the call, drives from wherever they're at, usually stages with another deputy or decides what resources they need, a K-9, helicopter, you know, a mental health clinician, whatever they need to appropriately handle that call. And then they arrive.
In six minutes average.
And they go on scene. And it's six minutes average.
Yeah, that's amazing.
And I'd actually, I would, if you allowed, I mean, like, what I'll do for this one is I'll go through and do the audit and I'll email you within the next couple of days and you'll see that time will drop. I would guess it'll drop by at least a minute.
Oh, my gosh.
Just because there's going to be some outlier calls in there that I have to pull out.
Wow. Now you know how police work, you know, how, how it works. So, so thank you, Captain. That is very informative. And I'm very, I'm also very proud of our police. And did we just learn that we're the 20th safest city in the country? I just read that today in one of our printed materials, 20th safest city in the country. So keep up the good work and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So now we're ready for public comments. A total, yes?
Yes, we do have so.
And a total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting or by submitting a speaker card, by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting by the city clerk. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the meeting is called for public comments. Email comments shall be subject to the same rules as would otherwise govern in-person public comments. So could we have our first speaker, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have six in-person, non-agendized public comments and then one email. And I think we can get through all three of them in the 30-minute time.
Okay, thank you.
So the first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Gillian Larson.
My public comment's going to be about the ready commission again and the need for it. And this all happens to be, I know it's been disputed, but the Black Lives Matter was the reason, I believe, that the, and I am sure, I'm sure that the ready commission was formed by the Black Lives Matter storming this city. Having said that, the need for the, for the ready commission was in doubt or being looked at. And all of a sudden, there was a, Marina Valley, cheerleader at Marina Valley said that Temecula Valley High School, there was some kids there that had heckled her, she was black, and there were some, and, and I, at the time, it went to national news. And since then, I looked it up and the press enterprise said that most of the charges were unsubstantiated, meaning at a time when we have digital, everybody's taking pictures and, and recording everything, there is nothing to, to go on? Let me ask, you know, maybe the police can, can tell me if there's anything at all to this. Because in the past, by no apologies have ever been given for things that have been wrong in the past, two people have, have been destroyed by lies like this. In 1987, the Tawana Brawley rape case was a fraud. At March 18, 2004, a professor who claimed she was targeted in a hate crime at Claremont College staged, vandalized her car. Covered with racist, anti-Semitic, and sexist epitaphs on March 9th while she spoke at a forum on racism. The incident prompted the faculty to cancel classes and students to stage rallies the following day. That was a fraud. March the 13th, 2006, everybody may still remember the, the Duke hate crime hoax. It was peddled for a long time. There were a lot of people were hurt. Where, it even got to the name nifong. You're being nifonged by, if you, the prosecutor was just out of control. And, and, and the future of that was, hey, you've been nifonged. It turned into an adjective or a verb, maybe, I don't know. January, oh, August 9th, 2014, Hands Up Don't Shoot. That was a hoax. Michael Brown. That was a hoax. That did not happen that way. I believe that may have been the end of the founding of the Black Lives Matter movement. January 29th, 2019, Jesse Smollett.
You have 10 seconds, Mr. Cowell.
Is it over? Okay. Well, it goes on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gillian Larson, to be followed by Larry Slusser.
Gillian, how are you? Good to see you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm shorter. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and of course, commissioners. I am here, I've been gone since the end of July. I've been out of town. I escaped elder jail and I got back a few days ago. And I'm here to announce that Reality Rally will... be back in May of next year. We're not here to invite you all to come and be on that team so that you can take it away from Lake Elsinore. However, I wanted all of you to know, because all of you have been so supportive of everything we've done, and I'm sure you know, but in case anybody watching doesn't know, Reality Rally is a three-day fun event that is created by myself after I was booted off Survivor in order to do something positive with it. And we have three days of events to raise money for the entire reason all of my volunteers and everybody does this crazy thing to raise money for Michelle's Place Cancer Resource Center. Otherwise, believe me, it would be too much work. I enjoyed my parole from elder jail and found out there's a lot more to do than work hard, but we will never stop doing this for Michelle's Place, and we will be back. To let you all know, I expect to see lots of teams from Temecula, I expect to see the whole of the valley know, the comments that I put on today on Facebook announcing we are back, got lots and lots of comments. Wildamar said they're back, and many of the others said that they're back. So thank you again for all of your support over the years, because it has meant so much. We are going to have our 10th year. So sadly, COVID shut us down for two years, but it'll take more than COVID to stop the enthusiasm for what we do to help raise money for Michelle's Place and to promote Temecula. So thank you very much, and I'm sure my time is over.
Oh, no, you got a minute left.
Do I still have a minute? Hooray! So, yes, I am very excited. So thank you so much again for all of your support. You guys came on board in the first year, which was 2011, and we will have that 10th year celebration on March 5th, 6th, and 7th. Excuse me, May, what am I talking about? It is May, 5th, 6th, and 7th. Check our website, realityrally.com, check Facebook, and you'll see all the announcements coming out as we set them in. There's a party at Wilson Creek, there's a lip sync at South Coast Winery, and there's the amazing race all over Old Town, and everybody's going to be involved again. So thank you again, and I still have 23 minutes, I can't believe it.
23 seconds.
Thank you very much, Randy. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank you again, and we missed you during COVID. You know, Reality Rally, you have put the fun in fundraising, and I know Michelle's Place is so appreciative, and so are we, because they provide tremendous services to cancer patients in, in Temecula and in the valley. So, I hate to bring it up, but is Elsinore the champion city team again, or is it Wildamar?
Well, no, Elsinore is the winners for many, many years. Out of the nine years, they have won eight years' worth of that event on Saturday.
Okay, people.
So, let's see you take it away.
This just can't happen again. This just can't happen again, okay? So we're going to get together and figure this out. We have to be able to beat Lake Elsinore, and I'm so tired of hearing Steve Monos, you know, brag about how great they are, so.
But in addition, it's, you know, what pleases me so much is that we have every city in the area from, the whole area, we had nine city councils represented, they're all encouraging their people to join us, and that is so pleasing, that's been a huge part of Reality Rally, to see all these cities, and I love it when they talk this in your meetings.
Oh, yes.
Like, we're going to beat you.
Yes, you know, and we love our other city council members from, from other cities, but boy, Lake Elsinore's just had too many years, so we're going to work on it.
And thank you again, everybody, and it's good to be back. I'll be back.
Glad to see you, thank you, Gillian.
The next speaker, Madam Mayor, is Larry Slusser, to be followed by Eric Bunch.
Mr. Slusser, I saw you when I came in, how are you?
Good, thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity of talking. First, I'd like to thank Aaron for his beautiful prayer that he offered, and one of the things that he brought out was unity that is needed here in the city, and I'd like to talk about that tonight. Thank you for establishing the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I was one who didn't think that we needed it, but I have discovered that the city isn't as perfect as I thought it was. And so I think the Ready Commission, though, should include another goal, and that is to have some unity. The Three Musketeers had a motto, "All for One and One for All." In other words, they looked out for the one, but they all belonged to the whole. The Ready Commission is doing an excellent job at looking for, looking out for the one. For example, in a recent meeting, Commissioner Faulkner commented, when he looked at a photograph of a city-sponsored service group, he wondered why he didn't see anybody there that was physically impaired. And Commissioner Wilson commented how proud she was to live in a city that looks out for all people. And Commissioner Pastorian commented that when a future multi, multicultural event is held, the commission has to make sure that every group is invited to participate. Looking out for and including the one is good, but it's not enough. In addition to looking out for the one, the city needs to implement the second part of the Musketeers motto, "All for One, One for All." In other words, all citizens, no matter who they are, no matter where they live in the city, no matter what their cultural or racial background, are welcome in the city of Temecula. Until the cities are, until the citizens are accepted for who they are, and not for what special group they belong to, our work is not done. Temecula is a city that others can only dream of living in. Living in Temecula is a blessing, but it's a blessing to only 110,000 people. The Ready Commission should have as its goal to work themselves out of a job by helping everyone be united and accepted for who they are. Can the goal of bringing unity to the city be added to the purpose of the Ready Commission? I know they already got an assignment tonight, maybe this one could be added on there. Some ideas to help bring about unity is to celebrate or establish a day for Temecula unity. Accomplishments by the city at schools, sports, and individuals could be made, made public. A unity walk could be part of the celebration where no one.
10 seconds, Larry.
Okay. Where no one has reference to anything that's different about them, but they come to, as a citizen of the community, under their commonality. Thank you for, for hearing me.
Thank you very much.
Eric, okay, and after Eric is Greta Pontrelli.
Perfect. Mayor, City Council, staff, thanks for all that you guys do. Grateful to be here and have this opportunity to share, and great segues, one, community, right? That's kind of tying into what we do. And the second, a fun fundraiser. We got one, too. I'm with Habitat for Humanity, and we're doing a fun, everybody, if you're doing an at-home project, or if you might have heard, cost of lumber has gone up, it's starting to come down, but it's still high, so we're doing a fun campaign. It's called Lunges for Lumber. Donate 10 bucks, do 10 lunges, tag a friend to do the same. It's super simple, like, I'll go first, I'll tag council member Zach. Challenge accepted, maybe you and the biking crew, right?
Good.
Challenge accepted.
Yeah, there we go, we're in. Information's easy, just visit our website, habitativ, I as in ice, V as in Victor, dot org, and all the information's on there, it's going through October 9. And perfect segue, since I got a little time, too. Seems like it goes a little bit faster, but that's okay, I like to talk, too. Speaking of lumber, Christmas Tree Lane, wonderful event that we host here in Temecula at the promenade, it goes live November 9. Please bring the families out, I may or may not have heard that Santa might be coming back this year as well to the mall.
He is coming back.
The promenade. So, just keep that in mind for, for all the families, it's, it's going on from November 3 to December 15. And until then, happy lunging.
Thank you, and Santa will be back this year, and Zach, you can tell me what's a lunge, you can tell me later. I don't want to know right now, but, yeah, you can tell me later.
So, the next speaker is Greta Pontrelli, and then after her is Dale Borgeson.
Good evening, yeah, you can pull that down. Yeah, there you go.
So tall. Thank you so much. I, I want you to know that I am against the massive proposal for all the housing, but what I'm for is, so many people would like to work where they live. We've been known as a bedroom community, so you say some people want to live where they work, we want to work where we live. We don't want to have to go to Orange County and San Diego, that's where a lot of the traffic comes from. So I believe this should be something that we want to look seriously into. I think it's more important than creating this massive project, because when we did the survey, the number one thing people said is traffic. This is going to create massive traffic, we have a serious water shortage, and I really believe that we have to look at infrastructure first. Before we do anything, we have to say, let's have the infrastructure. Because if you start putting in homes without the infrastructure, it ruins our quality of life, it really does. And it's, we love living here, all of us do, it's a wonderful community, there's so many positive things about it, but I really believe that first things should come first. And I do have a point on the Ready Commission. I have been really looking into a lot of things in the community, I think we need to focus on creating entrepreneurs. I think there need to be more programs so that the young people can stay here and teach them how to build businesses, also teaching coping skills, teaching how to turn negatives into positives. And most importantly, for all of us, I think the whole view of all of us should be, become the very best you can become. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our last in-person speaker is Dale Borgeson, and then I have one email comment.
Mr. Borgeson, welcome back.
Good evening, nice to be here. Thank you, Mayor Edwards, council members, city staff, commission members as well. I'm here representing the Bike Temecula Valley Bicycle Coalition, which we have quite a group of esteemed members. The Bike Temecula Valley Coalition of bicyclists continues to support the city on numerous projects that encourage safe, efficient, and enjoyable bicycling, as well as other modes of active transportation. We hope to motivate citizens and visitors to use active means of alternative transportation that will make our community healthier through human-powered movement, benefit the overall traffic circulation flow, and ultimately improve the quality of life in our city. So our comments tonight are in regard to the Community Development Monthly Report, which is Agenda Item 11 on your agenda tonight, the Diaz Road Expansion Project Phase Two, which includes improvements to Diaz Road from Winchester Road to Cherry Street. Bike Temecula Valley has commented on this project's Phase Two previously, suggesting that the plan for road improvements north of Winchester include a separated bike lane. Diaz Road already hosts a trail segment belonging to both the Myrieta Creek Regional Trail and the future Temecula Loop Trail. The four cities who are developing the 20 miles of the MCRT, including the city of Temecula, need a separate trail running parallel to Diaz Road and the Myrieta Creek, from Myrieta Creek to Winchester to Cherry, in order to connect the trail as it travels north through Myrieta, Myrieta beyond Cherry. The corner of Winchester and Diaz is also a very key point for safely connecting the Myrieta Creek Trail to the newly or will be soon to be opened Santa Gertrudas Creek Undercrossing. This will be including a quality Class 1 separated trail along Diaz Road, Phase Two, would be significant to improving active transportation options within our city and connectivity to other communities in our area. So, we urge the council to pursue improvements on the Diaz Expansion Phase Two to include quality trails and trail connection facilities. BTV is grateful for this opportunity to support quality active transportation infrastructure projects. We are thankful for all the work council and staff have put into active transportation projects, such as the Old Town segment of the Myrieta Creek Trail and the Santa Gertrudas Creek Undercrossing Project, as well as the outstanding complete roads and trails in the new summer spin development. We hope to continue to be part of your journey to become a viable walking and biking community. Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
And, Madam Mayor, we do have a little time left in the 30 minutes, so there is one emailed comment on non-agendized items. It is from Bridget Green. "We must abolish CRT, Ready Commission, and mayors of cities are now firing school board individuals that are endorsing the programs of sex education, probably borderline pedophilia, and so much more. We are not going to endorse any of these demands, and we will recall all of them, including the city council member, and we will not elect them in the future." Madam Mayor, that is all of our in-person comments on non-agendized items, as well as the one email comment.
All right, thank you. So, next thing on the agenda is the City Council Report, and I know that we have some presentation and we have slides, right? So, what? Oh, is there a comment, what's, okay, wait a minute. Are we good?
I'm sorry. There is, I do not have any more public comments on non-agendized items. I do have public comments on item number 10.
Okay, all right. So, so we can go on for City Council, we can go on with City.
Yes, we are not on number 10 yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet, so. City Council Reports, Matt, I have you down to go first, and you have slides, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could pull up the slide real quick. So in case you haven't noticed, there's quite a bit of work going on in Myrieta Creek through Old Town and out toward the, the south end. Thrilled to see this happening, this has been a long time in the coming, and it's all about protecting Temecula from flood events. Now, I know we keep talking about a drought earlier, but it does rain here, and, and when it has in the past, we've had some massive flooding in, in Old Town. And so this project has been a very long-term initiative, but it's nice to see that it has moved forward again, and nice to see that even during COVID, the Army Corps and Riverside County Flood and everybody kept charging ahead with, with a very important project for the integrity of, of the city of Temecula. And I was hoping our Public Works Director might comment just a little bit on this as well for us.
Sure, be happy to, Councilmember Ron. So what you see in the pictures here is basically the, the final work that'll be done on what's called Phase One and Phase Two of the Myrieta Creek Project, and that's everything south of Rancho California Road. What they're doing here is they're removing the sediment that has built up over the years on the bottom of the channel. Down at the south end of the channel, there was up to four feet of sediment that had been built up over the years. So this last portion of the project is to remove all that sediment from the channel, and then the, the creek itself will be turned over to the Riverside County Flood Control District once this work is complete. And then the city of Temecula's been working with the Flood Control District on the trails adjacent to the creek, and the plan is that those trails will be taken over for maintenance and, and use by the city and be able to be open to the public. And we're hoping for the trail, the paved trail on the east side of the creek, so next to Old Town, will be able to be open to the public in, we're hoping, October, so sometime in the very near future. So that's what you see going on there, and then like you said, once the silt removal is done, that completes the, the Phase Two A and Phase One part of the project, and really addresses the most of the flooding issues of Old Town.
Fantastic, thank you. And then just really quickly, last week, we had the opportunity to spend some time up north in the lovely city of Sacramento with Cal Cities talking about, well, basically, you know, what's going on in the state and what's going on in our cities, and just, you know, I, I have to say, and Carolyn, you know, needs to hear this as well, was the, the quality of the presentations and the workshops and all that is, is dramatically better. And, and really, I, I think the interesting thing for me, I was able to sit in on, on workshops and, and, you know, talks related to wildfire drought, economic recovery, we all sat in on that one, economic recovery post-COVID, traffic safety, and then, you know, most importantly, one of the, one of the big items, the voting delegation, including myself, had to address was the tax distribution from online sales. And the good news was, so the bad news is, you know, that has been a point of contention as soon as they started collecting taxes for online sales. The, there was a push, and Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the push was basically that those cities that host the distribution sites for companies like Amazon would by default receive all the tax revenue of those sales that are distributed through those sites. And, and that has never been the history of how that's done, and, and to preserve, I think, the equitable distribution of the taxes, that, that item was sort of pushed back to the committees again to review, to make sure that every city is properly represented, because it's the only tax I would ever be aware of where, you know, the, where, where sales and, and distribution actually occur no longer represents the equitable distribution of tax. And it's not to say that those cities with these distribution centers don't shoulder a significant burden to them for having those centers. However, you know, the, the fair and equitable distribution of that tax is very important, especially to cities like ours where we know a lot of online sales occur. And that, that impact from additional trucks on the road and traffic and everything else that goes along with it should come with some offset, which is typically in the form of sales tax revenue. So to be able to preserve. typically in the form of sales tax revenue. So, to be able to preserve that and hopefully see that conversation move forward, I think was a nice way to wrap up meetings on Friday. So, that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Jess, I have you down for a presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We can just get some of the pictures. So, I was able to, this weekend, be able to join this team called Cert Community Emergency Response Team. And if anybody, I think a couple of our, I know Matt Ron has done it, there's several people in the community who are joining this team, and I really welcome anybody else to get out there at the next training. Captain Hayes and the Cert team did such a phenomenal job. We had a great weekend, great lunches were included as well. There was many things, as you can see, first aid, we went over evacuation plans, earthquakes, terrorism, how to put fires out, looking at fire extinguishers in your homes. So, we've really spoke about how to, number one, protect yourself and your homes and your family, then go out to the neighborhood, and then go out really to the city and how to be able to, you know, basically have an environment where we can all help each other, because we only have so many firefighters and there are so many police officers out there. And when it comes down to it, we're really going to need to depend on our neighbors and each other. So, I just appreciate this team very much now that I got to really see what they're all about. They're really dedicated, and they absolutely love what they do. So, if anybody's interested, or even if you have teenagers who are interested, I really urge you guys to get signed up. If there's one thing I learned, a lot of things, you know, were what I've already done in the police department and in the military, but if there was one thing I remembered came through is make sure you always have your equipment and never drop it. So, this was from Captain Hayes. I had a incident where I literally left my glove, and those are kind of really important while you're out in the field to make sure you're safe. So, I appreciate the gesture to remind me. So, thank you very much. It was very good. So, again, just get out there, check it out with TCC. They do great work, and I just appreciate all you guys and all you're doing. So, thank you very much.
Stu.
All right. So, one of the things that's near and dear to my heart, besides the Construction Trades Program, is this new series that we're starting up. It's going to be a three-week series, starting October 13th, going through October 27th. It's all on a Wednesday nights from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Old City Hall, which we call TVE2. So, it's right there off of Diaz back in the industrial park. So, just from my experience being a barber and talking to people on a daily basis, it kind of struck me how few people have financial planning. And not only financial planning, but retirement thoughts on, you know, what am I going to do when I retire? How am I going to retire? And so, that's what kind of spawned this right here, is to try to give people, you know, whether they be young or old, you know, even if you're old, if you're in your 50s and you're
Hey, 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 50?
Right. Right. Once you hit your 60s, it's kind of too late. But if you're in your 50s and you're thinking, you know, I need to have supplemental income to retire on besides Social Security, what can I do? And so, each one of these weeks has a different theme. Like, the first week is more for like a younger person, young couple, building a better budget, you know? And every time I hear the word budget, I kind of cringe because I don't, I don't, you know, yeah. And it's, huh?
Must be 50.
I'm slightly over.
Yeah.
So, but a lot of people, they need that kind of constraint to actually know where their money goes. And so, and once you actually build a budget and you realize where your money goes, it becomes a lot easier to control your spending. Because I know people who make a very good living, and they're literally living paycheck to paycheck. So, this is an opportunity for someone to kind of get a handle on their finances. And then, October 20th is going to be rebuilding after a financial crisis. So, with COVID, with, you know, people go through a bankruptcy, I mean, there's a lot of financial crises that would cause you to have to rebuild after. And so, that's what this October 20th is about. And they're going to give you, and by the way, it's AlTura Credit Union is going to be actually teaching the course. It's not the city of Temecula, it's not me. It's someone who, you know, they have basically written, I'm trying to think of the curriculum, that, you know, has been used and has been very successful. So, you know, it could be something as a death in the family. I mean, finances getting wiped out by hospital bills. So, how do you rebuild after that? Well, that's what October 20th is going to be about. It's going to be about, how do I rebuild from there? And then, October 27th is going to be about 10 steps of to financial success. And so, that's going to be more on the investment side. What do I do? Now that I've built my budget, now I've got built-in extra income, what do I do with that? And so, that's where October 27th comes in, is kind of giving you bullet points or ideas of how to successfully build that nest egg to actually retire on, to, you know, have that built in in case of a financial crisis. So, and that's what I just, I kind of felt, and I got a sense, because the end of last year, Community Services did an outreach to the citizens of Temecula on things they wanted to see Community Services do. And believe it or not, this came up, more often than not, that people wanted to have some sort of a class or some sort of, something that the city could put out there that helps them figure out their money situation. Not everybody has a parent or parents who were good financial managers. And so, you know, and we're supposed to learn from our parents, but sometimes you don't have that parent that could kind of lead you through that. So, that's why this three-week series was created, is to kind of give anybody who's kind of struggling with that whole idea to come in, and, you know, you're going to get a real sense on what are the steps necessary to actually make it through to be able to retire, you know, survive a financial crisis and, yeah. Oh, yeah, and it's free.
Yeah.
So, we won't, we won't impact your financial budget at all by showing up to this class. And we actually made a video, and I don't know if it's going on TikTok or something like that.
Instagram.
Yeah. And so, do you want to show it, Mr. J-Dog?
At first, I was like, ah! But now that I've had time to absorb it, it's all working out.
So, that's the promo for
What was that?
Right? Exactly. Well, evidently, these things work. I have no idea, but they said that that will work. So, we'll see.
Okay.
So, that's my pitch.
Good job. Scary, but good job.
Right? Okay.
All right. So, now we're ready to move to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar. Oh, what?
I would like to report as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Zach.
I feel, I feel like this is a reoccurring theme, but we're sitting right next to each other.
I didn't have your name on the list.
I'll make sure it gets on your list next time.
Okay, I will.
Stu, you're going to be Instagram famous. I know it. I don't know how I'm going to follow that. I had the privilege of attending the League of California Cities Conference on behalf of the city, and I certainly concur with what Mayor Protem said about the quality of the conference. It was quite amazing. It was my second one. I want to say, we've been going for 29, 30 years, as long as we've been a city. It was wonderful to connect with regional electeds, regional partners. There was a theme, and sort of after I digested everything, you realize many of the cities up and down the state are dealing with the exact same thing that we're dealing with, right? Good and bad. And realizing best practices, many of the Helen Putnam Award winners were things we did as well.
Yep.
Which was kind of nice to see. And while we didn't win an award, we knew at the end of the day, we're providing great services for the community. So, that really stuck out to me. Looking forward to next year. I think it's in Long Beach next year. So, that'll be exciting. It was nice to see a couple nonprofits come out tonight. I know it's been tough the last couple of years, so things are starting to happen again, fundraisers and the like. And then, the students. We had students back in here.
I know, I know that.
I know they, most of them left at 8:01, and I get it. But, you know, next time, at the beginning of the meeting, we need to give them a shout out, you know, because it was nice to see them again. We're back in session, kids are back in school, and they're here for their government classes. So, that's all.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Now, we can move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes September 14th, 2021. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside for pavement rehabilitation program, citywide Butterfield Stage Road and Pava Road, PWN 1908. Number five, receive and file temporary street closures for the 2021 Autumn Fest events. So, I will accept a motion in a second.
Move consent.
Second.
And could we have?
I don't know.
And item passes unanimously. Okay. So, I am going to recess the Temecula City Council right now to move on to the Temecula Community Services District. And President Zach Schwan.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll call tonight's Temecula Community Service District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we are all still here physically, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
No.
All right. Thanks. We'll go and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number six is approve action minutes of September 14th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let us vote. All right. Wonderful. That item passes 5-0. We can now move on to our Director's Report. Is there a Director's Report this evening?
Yes, sir, there is.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'm Mike Wooton. It's my privilege to be sitting in for Interim Director Eric Russo tonight, and I'm happy to provide the following updates. So, this Friday, October 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., TCSD's Human Services Division will be hosting our annual High Hopes Halloween Party at the CRC Amphitheater. This event is open to adults 18 and over with special needs. Registration is still available online through Civic Rec. Participants are encouraged to show off their costumes for a night full of spooky fun, dancing, food, and great company. We're also happy to announce that the annual Halloween Carnival is moving to a new location. The event will now be taking place in Old Town on Friday, October 29th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. There will be carnival games and spooktacular activities throughout Old Town. The main attractions will be stationed in Town Square Park, but don't forget to check out the Temecula Valley Museum for additional fun, including a performance by the Temecula Valley Youth Symphony at Sam Hicks Park. Attendees can even trick or treat along the way by visiting our first responders at the Police Substation and Fire Station 12 on Mercedes Street. Old Town merchants are also encouraged to pass out candy to carnival goers, and you won't want to miss out on this free event. Next, I'd like to provide this month's homeless outreach update, but before I do, before we get into the stats, I wanted to thank city staff members Mark Martinez and Patrice Brown, along with Aaron, David, and Jerry from SWAG for being here tonight. And while they're not here, I want to give a huge shout out to the Sheriff's Department's hot team, as they're so instrumental in what we do. So, for the month of August, we've had some continued success in assisting clients with getting off the streets and into either housing or treatment. For that month, we saw another eight clients exit the streets, bringing the year-to-date total to 45 through August.
Wow.
Unfortunately, we did have two individuals return to the streets, but we'll continue to work with them to eventually help them make their street exits permanent. For the month, there were also 10 illegal encampments removed, bringing that total to over 50 for the year. We were also able to provide rental assistance to a client to help her move out of her car and into secure housing. And then, on this next slide, which is the last slide, I just want to point out a few examples of the way our teams have been able to help our clients. So, the first client had been homeless in Temecula since around 2008. He's tried treatment in the past, but was never able to follow through on his own. Now, thanks to SWAG, who has been constantly working with this client, he decided he was ready to accept help. SWAG was able to get this client accepted into a residential drug treatment program where he'll be able to stay for up to 90 days. At the end of his treatment, the facility will work with the client to move him into transitional housing before eventually moving into a permanent home. The next example is a client who was referred to us by Project Touch, one of our great partners that we work with. This person had fled a past violent relationship and wanted to reunite with her family out of state. So, staff set up a meeting with the client, contacted her family to make sure they would accept her, then purchased a ticket for a bus leaving that day. And then, the last one is another client we were able to provide transportation for to reunite with his family. This client had been homeless in Temecula for over three years and was never interested in any assistance from the team in the past. After continuous follow-up and encouragement, he indicated he was finally ready to return home to his family in Florida. The team was able to purchase him a bus pass, and him and his dog, which we all really miss, actually, left that day for the three-day bus ride home. So, there are just a few examples, but it gives you a good idea of the different ways our team works to help those in need. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you for the success stories. It's really, really wonderful to see that and hear that. So, appreciate that. Any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to our General Managers' Report. Anything?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Thanks, sir. Directors, anything? All right.
We'll go ahead and move to adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, October 12th at 5:30. We're adjourned.
Thank you. And I'm going to call to order the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Let the records reflect that all members are here. So, do we have any public comments for SARD, we do not. So, I'll move on to the SARD Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Item number seven, approve action minutes of September 14th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, so we can cast our votes. And that's unanimous. So, SARD Executive Director, anything?
No report this evening, ma'am.
All right. Board of Directors, anything? No?
No, ma'am.
All right. Then, we will adjourn this meeting to the meeting of Tuesday, October the 12th at 5:30 p.m. for closed session, with regular session commencing at 7:00. And thank you very much. Now, we are going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we're going to go into a public hearing. Actually, no, we're going to go on to Business Items, number 10, sorry. Business item number 10.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, no, number eight. I have so many notes written on this page, I can't see the numbers. Okay. So, do we have any public comments?
The public hearing, and we are hearing right now is item number eight for TUMF, and we have no public comments for this item.
All right. So, number eight is approve resolution to amend the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF, program. And who's going to do this? Pat Thomas?
That is me, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So, the TUMF program, and I believe you're all familiar with the TUMF program, so I'll just give you a very brief background of the TUMF program. So, TUMF, which stands for Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, it is a regional development fee that is charged to all private development throughout Western Riverside County. And the funds that are collected then are used to go towards improvements of what's called the regional arterial system throughout Western Riverside County. City of Temecula has been granted TUMF funds for various city projects that we've used, and most recently been designated TUMF funds for our Diaz Road widening project, which we will be starting on next year. So, one part of the TUMF program, which is included in the administrative plan, is that there be an annual review of what's called the Construction Cost Index, or somewhat similar to like a CPI index, that is used to then to keep the fee amount up to the current construction cost. So, there's typically an annual review and then an annual adjustment in that fee based on this Construction Cost Index. So, the last Construction Cost Index adjustment that was done to the fee was done in 2019. This past year, the index was evaluated, and the WRCOG Executive Committee approved of and the WRCOG Executive Committee approved of an adjustment to the fee that was approved by the Executive Committee on July seventh of this year, and the fee increase that was approved is a three percent increase that would go into effect on January first of two thousand twenty-two. Now, the actual construction cost index calculated was actually more than the three percent, but the Executive Committee felt it was appropriate to just apply that three percent increase to the fee. So here you can see what the current TUMF fee amount is, and again, it's charged for all private development throughout Western Riverside County. It's a per-unit fee for residential development and then a per-square-foot fee for different types of commercial development, and you can see the amounts there on the slide before you. And these are the amounts that would be in effect with that three percent increase, so you can just see that those numbers are three percent above what the current amounts are, and that fee would go into effect on January first of next year. So that concludes the staff report, and the staff recommendation is to approve a resolution to implement this CCI increase in the TUMF fee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions? No? No? All right, though, we will open the public hearing, and we have no comments. So going once, going twice, okay, so we can close the public hearing, and I will, we can discuss, or I will accept a motion.
I will move approval. Yep, I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, so let's go ahead and cast our votes. Let's assume that it's unanimous, because I'm not seeing the screen.
Member Ron, are you allowed, are you able to vote?
No.
Says yes.
There we go. There, she got it.
Oh!
Oh, there you go.
I was, yeah, I just counted it as a no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm kidding, it's a yes.
Unanimous.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make sure that the record reflects the unanimous approval.
All right, so now we are going to move on to business item number ten, which is approve city council protocol manual policies, and this is at the request of yours truly and Mayor Potem, Matt Ron. So Randy, you have a little intro for us.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. It's, I will give a very brief staff report and then turn it over to both you and Mayor Potem. On July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-four, the city council adopted resolution number ninety-four seventy-nine, setting forth the rules of order for conduct of city council meetings. On March twenty-second, two thousand eleven, the city council adopted resolution number eleven dash twenty-seven, setting forth the time limit for public comments. The city council approved the creation of a city council protocol manual as part of Phase Two of its Ready Initiative on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and approved the general policy contents of the city council protocol manual on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. On August twenty-fourth, a few weeks ago, the city council requested that the preparation of certain city council policies relating to the code of conduct, rules of order, agenda placement, requests for information of staff and public participation in meetings be expedited for consideration. The proposed resolution and ordinance are before the city council tonight as a result. And with that, Madam Mayor and Mayor Potem Ron, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you for additional comments and facilitating discussion and ultimate approval, if you so desire, of the resolution and the introduction of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So the reason we wanted this to be agendized, because over the years, the city council has had many verbal policies that never were formalized, and so finally, those were formalized. Many of them were formalized but never put together in one place, like a policy manual. So this will make it very easy for future reference to, for council members and the public to see what these policies are. So the resolution was a mechanism to adopt council policies, and there are five of those proposed today, and then there will be future policies available. So I'll go over a few of those, and Matt, jump in anytime you want, and then I'll hand over to you so you can go over the remainder. But the ordinance itself amends the current ordinance in place on the same topic to clarify the conduct and disruption of meetings to be consistent with the law and current practices. So the ordinance itself will just bring us up to date with current law. Council policies include standard operating procedures, good business, and normal maintenance of the city. Survey approximately twenty cities in California with similar policies, so we're not by any means the first city to do this. Council policies are adopted in public meetings to ensure the public, council, and staff are aware of policies and expectations. And then council policies can be changed by current or future councils at any time. So policy number one will be the code of conduct, which was first adopted in nineteen ninety-four, and that was resolution number ninety-four seventy-nine. It clarifies what conduct is expected of elected and appointed officials when they're engaging with each other, with staff, and with the community in private, public, official, unofficial settings. So that would be decorum, individual versus city representation or not. It's really hard for us to be in public because we're known for being city council members, but we are, we're people too, and so, you know, we do personal business, not business, but personal communication and, you know, activities with friends and things like that, so not to be confused with a city council business. Policy number two will be the rules of order, and those were first adopted in nineteen ninety-four by resolution ninety-four seventy-nine, and that clarifies what procedural motions and similar actions may be used by the city council to conduct a public meeting, you know, obtain the floor, call for the question, and basically, we follow Robert's rules. So policy number three will be the agenda placement, and that will formalize a process for council members to be able to place items on the agenda for staff to track to those requests in a public and transparent manner. So we need to keep better track of items that are going to be placed on the agenda and how that request comes and an item gets to be placed on the agenda. And so then, policy number four is a request for information and staff time, and that was first adopted in two thousand as a standalone council policy, and that clarifies how individual council requests for routine and non-routine information and staff time will be processed, and so that is how staff time will be utilized. And then policy number five was public participation, which was first adopted in nineteen ninety-four, again, resolution ninety-four seventy-nine. And that was amended in two thousand eleven to adopt a three-minute time limit for public comments that, items that are not on the agenda, and then a thirty-minute time limit total so that the business meeting could still be conducted. So, and this, this new adoption will clarify the current practice for public comments on non-agenda and agenda items and public hearings. So really, what this does is it formalizes and makes it easy for us to reference in one place and for the public to see in one place how the council operates and what rules we follow for the different policies and procedures that we have. And so the subcommittee got together with city staff, and they actually pulled up all of those resolutions that were passed and gave us the dates just for a reference. So many of those were already passed and formalized, and this will bring some of them up to date with current laws and standards, or it will just once again formalize those policies and procedures. So Matt, you want to go ahead and mention, you know, what we discussed and?
Yeah, well, I think it's, simply put, this process started two years and two months ago now, you know, to basically say, hey, you know, as a city, we've matured to the point where we need, you know, to consolidate our policies into one manual. So as you'll see, what we've elected to do is bring forward first a bulk of policies that actually have already been on the books for a number of years, right? But again, this is an opportunity to sort of provide a little bit of additional clarification on those policies, but also just, again, start the development of this. And we kind of thought it was a lot easier to do this in tranches rather than bring forward thirty-five different council policies all on one night to kind of discuss. And we also thought, starting with, you know, four of these policies that are already on the books and existing, you know, was, was an easier way to get the conversation rolling as well. And then ultimately, you'll see, you know, started again two years or so ago, you'll see this process play out in a number of future meetings as well, where we talk about travel policies and all sorts of other stuff that we have. Now, most cities already have a policy manual for, for their, you know, folks. We just happen to have a lot of, you know, resolutions passed that were never consolidated into a single manual. So this is an attempt to help provide a little bit of additional clarity so folks aren't searching around looking for, and then also, I think, to, to help, you know, future councils, you know, and the way that they're going to run meetings and the operations of the city. The other thing, too, I think to keep in mind is that council policies are as good as the council wants them to be, right? So they're policies, which means that, you know, and you've seen this, you know, there's, there's no policy that requires us to read an email comment that is emailed to us. That was a concession that we started during COVID because it was such a challenging time, and it just was something that, you know, we'd received the comments, but we thought, eh, it's appropriate to read those into the record as well. So even though that's not in a written policy anywhere, right? And even though we didn't choose to, because we thought as challenging as those meetings were and as those times were, it's just a little bit more simple to provide more access and a little bit different way of, of running those meetings. And so really, it's up to the council and up to the mayor on how the, the meetings are run. These are the guidelines, if you will, and, and future councils or this council can look at these guidelines and say, yeah, you know what, we missed the, the mark on this thing, maybe we need to adjust it a little bit. It's always open for, you know, additional scrutiny and interpretation. So this is just a good first crack at it, and I think it's an easy one because it already consolidates, again, a lot of things that, that we already have on the books. And that's, that's at least my perspective on it.
So any questions? Question, 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 question? Comments, okay, so do we have any public comments?
I do have some public comments on this. The first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Christine O'Neill.
Mr. Cowell, well, it's not good evening, you're still here, so good to see you again.
Back again, yeah. Okay, I, I read the five policies and the one ordinance that are presented here tonight, and the biggest problem is the time limitation of thirty minutes total allotted for public comments. First off, almost all avenues of free speech are being closed down for me and others. Our voices are not heard in the media or in the workplace. For some people, this is the only place that people have a public forum where they can say what they want. We need to be included in this society, not excluded just because someone doesn't like what we have to say. As far as the nuts and bolts of these policies, the ordinance, I have the following comments. When we turn in our speaking slips, who decides on who speaks first? Do people that send in their comments get their comments read first? Or do we, we who attend get our comments read first? Would it be inclusive to disregard those who cannot come because of illness? If we had to go back to Zoom, who decides on the order of the speakers or their presentation by the city clerk? Is it the, is it the first come, first served? How do we know it is fair? Many people cannot make it in time because of work to get their speaking slips in early, so they may not be able to speak. They are excluded, not included. When I worked in Huntington Beach, I didn't get home until nine p.m. because of traffic. If we, the people, can stay for six hours, why can't the city council? In the public participation at meetings, policies, audience decorum section, clapping is allowed as well as other activities, as long as it doesn't get out of control. Who determines that point, and will it be administered fairly? There's fines involved. Will, will we be fined five hundred dollars or one thousand by the county sheriff's office if things get out of control, or by the code enforcement? In the ordinance under B nine, this ordinance under section B nine, why does it say masks, costumes, disguises, or other regalia that disrupts the meeting? Who determines that? Does my health mask or somebody's health mask count? Maybe because of color or other, who knows what, maybe something that says on it. How about a Catholic priest outfit, or a Native American in their clothing, or a Muslim in their clothing, or, or burka, or a hijab? If you can limit public comments to thirty minutes, why just, why not limit it to three minutes and just have one speaker? I think most of these policies are in order, except allowing all speakers to speak. Fairness, fairness comments, let's see, I got this wrong. Fairness is all important. Inclusion of those who cannot make it in time to get to their public comments should be accommodated. Diversity of thought should be encouraged to allow everyone who wants to speak, speak. Maybe a deadline of midnight could be arranged as it ends the day. That's just a thought of mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell.
The next speaker is Christine O'Neill, to be followed by Michael Jordan. Christine?
No.
Next speaker is Michael. Okay. Next speaker is Darlo Bianchi. Okay. And then, Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of emailed comments.
Okay.
And the first one is from Cindy Kennedy. As a longtime resident of Temecula, I never thought I would see the day that silencing free speech would be on the agenda. I hope the Soros money is worth it. Welcome to the new Nazi Germany, AKA Temecula. We all know who funds the League of Cities. This is all coming right out of their playbook. Maybe Zach could share how his recent taxpayer-funded brainwashing trip to the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento went. The next speaker is Rick Reese. The proposed ordinance concerning city council protocols and the conduct of city council members during meetings, their interactions with the public, and the public interactions with the council raise concerns that potentially abridge First Amendment freedoms and other issues of just plain fairness and due process. To begin with, there needs to be a more impartial, fair, and balanced manner in the selection of public speakers during the thirty-minute general public comments portion of the meeting. Are the speakers selected at random by the city clerk by their submitted pink request forms? Why aren't these submitted forms timestamped to allow speakers on a first-come, first-served basis? Should these pink request forms instead be placed in a basket and selected at random like a lottery? Perhaps this would be more fair and equitable. What exactly are the procedures for selecting the speakers? Also, why are the public comments limited to only thirty minutes? Is there a reason for this, or is this just an arbitrary time limit? Why shouldn't it be extended to forty-five minutes or sixty minutes? I frequently submit my comments via email, such as tonight. Should my email comments take priority over submitted pink request forms comments because my comments were submitted hours or even days before the speaker who appears live and in person? I hope that you all will elaborate. What is truly fair here? As far as people in the live audience clapping, the city council needs to address and consider the fact that the council itself and the public audience routinely applaud whenever an award is presented to notable Temecula residents. Recognition is given to the local scouts for achievements, and awards and retirement ceremonies are conducted for city staff and members of the fire and police departments. If clapping and applause are expected and encouraged in such instances, then it seems entirely hypocritical that such applause is to be discouraged if the members of the audience agree and/or support a particular speaker. This seems like a double standard and inherently unfair. In one instance, clapping is good. In another instance, clapping is bad. Please address and clarify this disconnect. Also, since city hall reopened to live council meetings, the city council has allowed general public comments to continue after the end of the council business towards the end of the meeting. This has created both a precedent and an expectation that most of all of the requested public speakers will get their two to three minutes to voice their concerns to the city council. Yet at a recent city council meeting, this allowance was not permitted as the meeting was gavel-close without any further public comments. There were many hopeful speakers who were left frustrated because they had an expectation, based on past meetings, that the commentary period would be continued on towards the end of the meeting. These frustrated people waited patiently only to discover that they had wasted their time sitting through an entire two- to three-hour council meeting with no opportunity to speak their concerns. Lastly, I believe that you need to revisit many of the cited conducts that are listed as prohibited in your proposed ordinance. A prime one that could affect me is one-sided as disruptive behavior under section B five, speaking on an issue that is not within the jurisdiction of the council. Recently, I had submitted public comments to you regarding the dismal and dilapidated appearances of our local U.S. post offices here in Temecula. Obviously, the city council has no jurisdiction over the U.S. Postal Service, a federal agency, but as a city council, you do have influence over city hall that extends to influence with our local post office officials. In fact, I have received supportive feedback from both city staff and one or more council members that the city would indeed pressure the United States Postal Service members that the city would indeed pressure the United States Postal Service to better maintain their facilities. Yet, based on this proposed ordinance, I can see how my comments to you could easily be cited as disruptive behavior because my comments concerned the city council using its powers and influence for an agency that is indeed outside of the city's jurisdiction. But the city still has the ability to influence and lobby those running our local post offices, and these changes should be seen as an overall benefit to our community at large. Please carefully take these issues and concerns into full consideration, and if this ordinance is to be approved and implemented, then ensure that it is written and applied to maximize the freedoms, equity, and inclusion of everybody concerned. The city council claims to support the ready commission, then you should ensure that this proposed ordinance is indeed equitable and inclusive to all of our diverse public speakers, regardless of race, sex, creed, origin, historical background, and personal point of view. Respect, decorum, and civility are all addresses on a two-way street, just as the public speaker should show respect and civility within City Hall. The city council, too, must exhibit the same towards the public. We, the people, have the legitimate right to question, challenge, express opinions, to suggest ideas, and even applaud our representative government here in Temecula. Thank you for your attention and time. And then the last speaker is Suzanne Lane. Supreme Court, I'm sorry. I respectfully request that you get more public input before confirming the proposed new ordinance regarding public participation in meetings, as it appears in its current draft form, to be a violation of our First Amendment rights of freedom of speech. Please reference 1965 New York Times versus Sullivan as a precedent. Supreme Court Justice William J. Brennan, Jr., applying that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide and open, and said that vehement criticism and even mistakes were part of the price of a democratic society must pay for freedom. Please honor your oath to uphold the Constitution. And actually, I do have one more. It's from Jeff Pack. I am pleased to finally see a city council protocol manual be adopted in the city. The city has enjoyed decades of mostly reasonable behavior from those sitting on the dais, and unfortunately, these policies have to be brought forward due to recent unprofessional behavior and damaging personal displays, partisan political temper tantrums. The future of the city depends on a council that stays focused on its responsibilities in serving the whole of this community, not the whining political shouting coming from north of the city limits. Civility has a place in local politics. This is not Washington, D.C., or Sacramento, for that matter. If you want to make a name for yourself by utilizing this platform, you do so to the detriment of the constituents. The city council chambers are not a pulpit, nor a political platform, or an egotistically manufactured bullhorn, but a responsibility bestowed upon each one of you that is grounded and service to your community. To butcher a song by the iconic Ice Cube, check yourself before you wreck our city. If you can't help yourself, do us all a favor. Save the bad analogies, false comparisons, mythical ideologies, and bite your tongue every Tuesday night for the good of the city. Then grab a soapbox and a bullhorn, head on down to Duck Pond. It's always open, and preach to the passing cars. That's where your personal political beliefs belong, anywhere other than this room. Madam Mayor, that's the last of the public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you, Randy. So no questions? Any discussion? No? Zach?
I guess I'll go. So I'll just give you my perspective, and just as a, you know, fairly new council member, I think this is a good idea, right? To put everything in one spot. When you talk about onboarding, when you talk about, you know, being elected, it's a lot to digest. I mean, there were times where I thought we had a policy, but turns out we didn't have a policy, and it's sort of like learning as you go. For me, this is a good thing. It really helps any elected from, you know, from here on out, really sort of understand how we all not only interact with each other, but interface with the community, and then what our roles and responsibilities are. So there's nothing glaring in here. I did have a few questions that I asked staff, but I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
All right. Well, as I spoke to staff, and I'm asking for contingency on this right now, currently, there are some questions that I had, along with in some of this agenda packet in itself. I've been highlighting, I've been going through it, and there's just a concern about, especially looking at the heat and the environment right now today, and I just want to make sure, as a council member, my yes is my yes, and my no is my no. And I want to ensure that I'm giving 100% of either way I go to my constituents and the residents here in Temecula. I end up speaking to Bob Tyler because, just for timing for today, I'll be honest with you, and his, after looking over this, he was even saying he was an attorney here in the valley area, he said numerous provisions that are vague and overbroad, which likely will be challenged in court. So just for me, as a city council member, this is one of those things where I want to be able to bring it to my city attorney, to be able to be 100% sure about what I'm about to put forward as a vote. So there's a couple concerns that I have in here, and then I just want to make sure that we're good, and that way, again, I agree that there needs to be policy, and then there needs to be order. If there's anybody, it's definitely from me, but I want to make sure that we're 100% solid before we push an order onto the city.
So any further questions or comments? No? No? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for item number 10.
Wait a second. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So this is to move, so what is the, what's the, what are we doing here? Because this is just a draft form, correct? That we're looking at?
No. The actual item is approve city council protocol manual policies at the request of Mayor Edwards, Mayor Protemron. And these are the policies that we heard tonight, and all of them, I think was one, except for one, was already adopted and in place. So we're just codifying those to be included in a policy manual. There's never been a manual, so.
Right.
Yeah. Approve city council protocol manual policies at the request of Mayor Edwards and Mayor Protemron. So, and then what we presented to you are the items for consideration to make up the protocol manual.
And there'll be more.
And there will be more than this.
Coming forward.
And then also, staff looked at 20 other cities. We're not the first city by any means to do this. And so Randy looked at it. Peter has reviewed it, and, you know, it says we're on solid ground, so that's where we are.
Councilman Stewart, just to be clear, what you're being presented with tonight is, it's stamped draft, but it's for a city council vote this evening. You're not voting on a draft for a later date. You're being asked to either take action tonight or give staff direction, one way or the other. If there's concerns, if there's questions, if there's changes, if there's a continuance, that's what we're waiting to.
And after we accept it, it won't be a draft?
Can I?
Right? Matt?
So, and I'm assuming our city attorney has reviewed all of this, I'm sure, and based on some of the comments, I mean, are we, because my understanding was a lot of what has had been on the books and what's being presented tonight is already part of either, you know, existing statute or law, or, you know, case law on this, and follows those established guidelines.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the ordinance, which addresses disruptive behavior at the city council meeting, is based on many constitutional law, free speech cases that have been decided over the last probably 15 years, 15 to 20 years. So in my opinion, the way the ordinance is written and the examples that are given are written in such a way that it would pass muster under those cases. Now, the original ordinance that was in place simply said people may not engage in loud and boisterous activity at the city council meetings, and that was clearly unconstitutional. And the language in the ordinance which makes it constitutional, it says, "Those behaviors that actually disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the council meeting." That's the key. So people can clap, they can stomp their feet, they can whistle, they can boo, they can cheer, so long as it doesn't disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the council meeting.
So that would be the times when I couldn't hear people's names that were called to come up and speak?
Or when people disrupted a speaker so that the speaker couldn't continue.
Okay.
And that's, in all of the constitutional law cases on free speech, that's the phrase that the court has come up with. That's not my phrase. That's the Ninth Circuit's language that makes these work. And then also, too, in the ordinance, you will see there is a process that the mayor goes through to warn people that their behavior is violating that, to explain why, to, if necessary, call for recess before some action is taken.
Okay. So if we can't hear, or, you know, people are coming up to the dais or things like that?
The Constitution, yeah, basically says it has to actually disrupt or disturb the meeting so you can't continue.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can say, so just, I'll just put out one of the things, and actually, well, Bob was the only one who spoke today, but this was one of the things that I highlighted. And it was, I mean, just something very small, and I don't want to get into the bigger stuff that is concerning me, so I'll just go very simple, because I don't want to overspeak or speak incorrectly.
Where is it, Jeff?
Number nine, it's going to be, let's see, E, public participations at meetings. So there's a couple things here. I'm going to go to a really simple one, so that way we can all understand it. And if there's one thing that's off, then I have to look at everything. So number nine, it says here, "Wearing a mask, costume, disguise, or other regalia and paraphernalia that actually disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of city council meeting." Now, the biggest thing is, is the way I look at it, and looking at vagueness, what might disrupt me would be totally different of what disrupts you, or the mayor, or Zach, or any of their council members. So what does that exactly look like? I mean, for wearing a mask, does that, what does that look like for other individuals? It's just very vague. And so when it's vague, it's very hard to be enforced. So what does that look like? I mean, can we get more specific on certain things? What else? We had another one, speaking issues. Sorry, there was a ton of, I don't want to get into too much, because again, I really would like to be able to sit down, and I just, I'm asking you guys, as my constituents, after talking to staff, we do not have to rush this. There is no rush on this, to give me two more weeks, just to be able to dive in and get a little bit more understanding about this. There's no rush. I would like to be able to have everybody on board to make sure that the city is safe, and that me, as their city council member, and all of us are working together to just make sure we're all on board. And I'm just hoping you guys can see that.
Did you have a question for Peter, though?
Well, just in general, I guess, so Peter, how does that look in general, as far as vagueness? I mean, that's just being one thing that I found, and I know, we talked, I really want to have that conversation with you.
Well, with respect to number nine, the prohibited conduct is not wearing a mask, costume, or disguise, or other regalia. It's wearing it in such a way that actually disturbs, disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the city council meeting.
Okay, so what hap-
Obviously, if somebody's wearing a mask for COVID.
No, right.
It doesn't disrupt anything, but there have been instances in several cities where people wear masks, wear costumes, and then stand near the podium, so that people are intimidated from going to the podium, or people are afraid to speak because somebody is wearing a costume that's designed to intimidate them.
Right.
So those are the kind of behaviors that you're trying to address.
And that's the thing. What might intimidate me is totally different from the other four city council members that are here.
That's true, but under the law, it is the council members that need to make that decision based on the language of the constitutional cases that have come down, that the meetings actually disturbed, disrupted, disturbed, or impedes the orderly conduct.
So if I have somebody who's a Satanist and comes down here, and I'm just being for real, because we've seen this. They come down here in a vampire costume because they're a Satanist. That would offend me, but it might not offend others. So where, what point in time do we take away their freedom of speech? Because I feel offended. And I would never want to take away somebody's freedom of speech because I gotta, I have to have thick skins and stuff. If anything I've learned in here, that I've learned, is comments come out, or anything comes up, I'm a city council member, and I just got to roll things off my back. If there's anything I've learned. But my, how do I or anybody else can impede somebody's freedom of speech because of a disguise that they wear, or some type of freedom of expression? That doesn't make sense to me. And it's vague for me, as a city council member, and that's why I'm asking for this, to just be able to give me another two weeks. So it's just, and that's just one thing out of all of them. That's not all of it, so.
And I would tend to agree with her, because I guess I was not thinking that this was a vote today. I thought it was going to be discussion. And so, because when I saw draft, I thought this was just a draft, and we were going to come back with an actual. And so I want another couple of weeks to digest this, too. So I'm asking for the same thing. Let's just wait. I just want to, I just want to look it over a little bit more.
Zach, I see, I see you reaching for something.
And I don't mean any disrespect by this. I understand wanting a little more time. When I got the email on Thursday, you know, with this in there, you know, I dive into it, right? And I had them printed off and spent a lot of time looking over these five policies. There's not really anything controversial in here. I think we're making it controversial in that if there's actual disruption, we'll know it. Like, you'll just know when there's disruption, right? Sort of throwing out all these hypotheticals, and we could go down the rabbit hole of hypothetical and everything, right? I would just sort of caution on that. I'm confident, I mean, at least personally, I spent the time to digest this, ask my questions, and come here prepared to vote on this. I would like us to do that. So I'm just being honest.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Matt?
So a couple of things. One is, you know, a lot of what happens in the law is in the eye of the beholder, and the Supreme Court has mentioned that on more than one occasion in case law. But the vagueness isn't vague enough for me to know, like, you know, do we sit here at the, you know, two weeks from now and discuss what types of vampires we want to let into the room, and what classifies as an offensive vampire versus a non? I mean, I, you know, I can't foresee us doing that. My sense is, is instead what we do is, these policies, again, are policies. So if I see something that's offensive, or you see something as offensive, you can mention it, and then we've got, you know, the Jedi Master over there, Mr. Peter Thorson, to be able to tell us, are we meeting a legal threshold on requesting that that person remove their mask, right? And if we don't, or if he doesn't think it meets that test, then we don't do that. And if we've made a mistake, well, then we get sued. And I'm okay with that, because the whole point of having these policies in place is because there are a billion scenarios that have been not tested by the courts. And so there's no language that I'm going to see on this that's going to provide me the comfort level that says, this is the threshold of what constitutes an illegal vampire at City Hall, right? I just, I don't know we're ever going to get to that place. The other thing, too, I'd mention is, and again, no disrespect meant, but we've been working on this for two years and two months. This was brought back for council discussion in July, 13th of this year, and then three weeks ago, we had a discussion at council on this item and said, here's the things we are going to bring back immediately. And so for the past three weeks, we've known that these items are here. A little over a week ago, we received the draft agenda from the city clerk's office telling us, this is what's coming, and then we received the staff report with the full language on Thursday. So we've had weeks to digest this information, and, you know, look, if you're like me, and I see something on the agenda that I have a question or concern about, I basically just reach out to city manager's office, and I say, hey, there's this thing coming up, and I need more information on it. And I often do that before the staff report comes out. And if I see something in the staff report, I'll often set up time to be able to have that conversation ahead of the meeting. But in this case, these items, you know, four of these items already exist, right? Four of these items meet the legal sniff test of what we need to have in place, and four of these items, again, are just simply policy. So if we don't like the policy, and if it comes up that we get inundated with vampires at the next meeting, we can actually bring that forward at a future meeting and say, okay, you know what? We need a specific vampire policy. But until we get to that place, you know, that's my concern, too, is, this is a guideline. This is a guideline for us to be able to operate, to be able to understand, and be able to turn to this at some point and say, well, policy number two says this, should we enact that right now? And it's a yes or no decision. We don't actually have to implement any of these things. It is at the discretion of the mayor. It is at the discretion of the mayor, the council, city attorney, and everybody else to weigh in and say, no, it's okay to have, you know, Tuesday Vampire Night at City Hall. And I'm okay with that, you know, but I don't see anything in here that concerns me enough to say we need to spend an inordinate amount of time reviewing information that we've had in front of us for, you know, well, since 1994 and 2011.
Okay, so I'll keep going then. So I just gave the vampire issue just because it's something that would be offensive to some people, so thank you for the vampire day. Okay, speaking on an issue that is not within the jurisdiction of the city council. So this obviously has been a hot topic. We've had issues come up here to the podium that have been worldly, national, throughout other states that obviously we see can end up coming here to our city. So what does that mean on speaking, speaking on an issue that is not within the jurisdiction of the city council? What does that look like? Does that mean, to me, I'm sitting here thinking, does that mean we stop somebody because they're speaking a certain way? And that's, again, this is where I'm talking about First Amendment rights. It is, again, a very hot topic right now. And so if I'm going to tell somebody, well, you're not speaking about Temecula, so you have no right to talk. That's how I'm reading that. If I'm not, this is where I want to be able to sit down with our attorney. Another one, speaking to the audience rather than the city council. It's public comment, and it's not a comment to, it's not a council comment. Again, First Amendment. Again, I just need clarification. If you guys are going to vote, you're going to vote however you're going to do it. I would just appreciate, as your constituent, to be able to have a full five, five votes. We always want to have that, you can't give us two weeks. Two weeks, it's really not that big a video, but if it can make me feel good, or let's say I find something, or let's say Stu does, or let's say Mayor Mary Ann finds something, oh, we talked about it. Well, I'd rather do it right than have to backpedal and redo it. And I don't want to be sued if we don't have to. If we can take two weeks, it's better than have to be sued and sit there and have to spend weeks or months within litigation. That just doesn't make sense to me. So I say, let's have two weeks, let's just go through this. Even if we've had two years, two weeks is nothing, it's 14 days. We're supposed to be working together as a team. I'm asking for two weeks. Is that really that hard to get two weeks? I'm really asking for it, please. I'm not talking about vampire nights, I'm just giving an example.
Well, Peter's here, I mean, you can ask him anything.
There's a-
And actually, I think it's better to ask in public than it is to ask outside of public.
Well, that's-
The point of this meeting was to have this conversation.
I understand that, but there's things that I'm not understanding, and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't feel comfortable sitting here and asking certain things because I don't want to sound ignorant up here, I really don't. I'd rather kind of feel, sit down with my attorney and be able to go through this a little bit deeper. If you guys don't want it, go ahead and vote for it, I'm just asking.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move the item.
Actually, there's two items. One is the resolution to approve the policies, and the second is the ordinance, or I'll have to read the title.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, then, Peter, go ahead, please.
You want to do the resolution first?
Uh huh, please.
I don't have to read the resolution, so you can just make a motion on that.
Okay, so we have a motion, so your motion was on the resolution, and the second was on the resolution? Yes?
The motion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so then let's go ahead and vote. Okay, so we've got three yeses and two nos. And I would encourage you, if you have questions, go ahead and meet with Peter. And as it says in here, it's a discretion of the council. We can revise and amend, or we can change anytime we want. So I had all my questions answered. And again, Peter, we're not doing anything that's not already being practiced in other cities and tested. It's already been tested by the courts.
All of these things in the ordinance have been tested by the courts.
And has the verbiage used also been?
I use the language in the ordinance that came from the court decisions.
Okay.
And that's what saved the prohibitions from being in violation of the free speech clause.
Okay, so we're using the actual language from the court?
Yeah.
Okay.
The actual disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct is what the Ninth Circuit told us to use.
Okay. All right, thank you. So then we need, you need to go ahead and read for us, then, Peter.
Okay. This would be an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending Section 2.04.030 of the Temecula Municipal Code to prohibit conduct at city council and other public meetings that actually disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of meetings.
Okay, so you need a separate motion and a second for this one, too?
And that's to introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. And that one came up, three yeses and two nos, so the item passes. And again, if you have any questions or want to talk to Peter further about, you know, the precedent that's already been established by the courts, then go ahead, and I would encourage you to do that. So, thank you, and... We're going to move on. Department reports nothing. City manager, anything?
Nothing further tonight, Madam Mayor.
Nothing, and Peter, anything?
I have no further report tonight.
All right, then I'll accept a motion to adjourn for the meeting of October 12th.
Move adjournment.
And second, all in favor? Aye, and we stand adjourned, thank you.